Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and we are going to start. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the Chair, which I'm obviously not near the alarm, Commissioner Jacobs and Commissioner Alum have been excused for a conference in Washington DC. The Chair will ask the offending persons to leave the meeting until the individual regains personal control. Should the quorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such a time that genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you Chair Lee. As we convened for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it is crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to the fostering, understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past, and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you Commissioner Burton, I really appreciate that. The next item on the agenda, our work session agenda, is citizen comments, and we have four. We have one as virtual, so I'll do the three that are in person here first, and then we'll do the one that's virtual. First one is James Chavis, second is Brandon Love, and then Shanice Hamilton. Please, Mr. Chavis is on that side, but everyone else, would you line up on that side, over here?
Good morning Commissioners, my name is James Chavis, and I'm a longtime citizen of Durham. And I come to you this morning to inform you all that some of us Durham resident in District One and in District Five have started a disaster preparedness committee to bring our people up to par, that what will happen if a disaster happened here in Durham. As you all may know, in March, when that disaster went to Asheville, it also was for the came to Durham North Carolina, but it barred, we were spared. And at that time, I wonder, every last one of you in here, would you have been ready for that disaster? I'm here to tell the Commissioners, please get involved, because this is not, I'm looking up there, it's one, two, three, four, five, five black people, but it's not just for blacks. It's for every citizen that's a part of Durham, North Carolina, including those in the county. And they should be ready and getting us ready for a disaster if it shall come. So I'm here to let you know, our committee, we have been meeting, and we will be meeting for the next two months. May the 5th at Holton, from 10:00 to 12:00 on the second floor in the auditorium, and on June 7, I think, I don't have the thing I gave to him, unnecessary, the first Saturday of the next two months, from 10:00 to 12:00. I'm inviting you all to please come out and get involved, because as you know, the least of us will be getting the worst if a disaster come, because they will not be prepared. Help us to get these people prepared, thank you.
Mr. Chavis, good morning to you, and I thank you so much for the organization around disaster preparedness. We will coordinate to make sure some staff can be a part of the conversation and hear efforts that are underway. We have an emergency management department that keeps us focused on the disaster preparedness. If you may recall, about four years ago, we were hit by a malware attack, and you know, COVID also hit as well. Because of the efforts that the county did, we were able to get through what could have been a very crippling situation. You're right, our residents need to be prepared in the highest level, and so we will make sure someone is available to attend some of the meetings, if not all, but thank you so much for elevating this to the attention that it should be.
Okay, let me say one more thing. Your emergency management team came to us Saturday, okay, they gave a nice presentation, and just like what I said to them, I'm gonna say to you, you've been back to the past and I've been back to the past, but how many peoples in Durham know about emergency management? And what are they really supposed to be doing to influence our people, okay? And one of the things I let them know is, in March, in our community, our lights went out. Did any emergency management team come out there and try to find out any information to give us or help us in any way? No. Did the city of Durham do it? No. This is what I'm talking about. The help that people are supposed to be getting, we are not getting. So I hope you encourage them like we did Saturday, to put their boots to the ground and get out here and help get more and more people involved, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. All right, Mr. Love.
Thank you so much, mic check, we're here. Good morning, everyone. My name is Brandon Love. I stand before you today, a native son of the Bull City, born and raised right here in Durham. I've seen its beauty, seen its brilliance, yes, too often, and I've seen some of its brokenness. I'm dedicating my life to the well-being of the people of Durham, and today, I'm here with a simple message. Durham deserves a response team that meets people with care, no matter their hour, and no matter their age. Let's start with the others, right? Mental health and wellness emergencies don't have business hours. Crises don't look at the clock and say, eh, it's six o'clock, I'll just wait till the morning, right? That doesn't happen. Panic attacks, psychotic breaks, overdoses, emotional breakdowns, those moments tend to come when everything else is quiet, when the world is asleep, when people feel most alone. That's why, Expanding Heart, to operate 24/7, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, isn't just a smart move, it's a moral one. We need a compassionate, trained, unarmed response team, ready when the neighbors are at their lowest. That means, well, that's what heart is, and we need it all of the time. Let's talk about our kids. Durham Public Schools are full of brilliance, potential, promise, but they're also full of stress, some traumas, unaddressed mental health needs. Our students deserve more than discipline, they deserve care. Imagine if instead of punishment, we offered them peace, instead of handcuffs, healing, instead of fear, understanding, right? Expanding Heart into our schools means giving our kids access to adults who are trained to listen, support, and de-escalate, not just react. We already know what works. Heart is working. We've seen lives changed, families relieved, intentions diffused, now it's time to take it a bit further. Into the night, and into our schools. I want to thank the Board for your continued service to the county, and the people of Durham for raising their voices for a safer, more caring future. But I'll close with this, what's at stake is real. The need is urgent. We are not asking for charity, we are demanding change rooted in dignity. Our children can't afford to wait. Our neighbors in crisis can't keep being met with sirens and fear. We have the model, we have the momentum, now we need the courage and the funding to make Around the Clock for Heart, a community-rooted program that Durham deserves, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Shanice Hamilton, I'm also a resident of Durham, and one of the organizers with the Have a Heart Coalition as well, and I'm here to talk about the expansion of heart in the county. We are witnessing the success and the impact and the need for this type of care in the city, and we are unclear why the co-response teams are the only ones that are like being considered in terms of expansion in the county. We're excited to speak with each of you and figure out what interlocal agreement with the city and the county to expand the care of heart into our public school system actually looks like. We've been meeting with school board and have reached out to you all a few times to meet, to figure out what expansion in the county, as well as Durham Public Schools, could look like for us, because like my friend Brandon said, we don't actually have time to wait. I'm from Durham, grew up here, I had a mental health episode at school, Southern High School, one day, I had suicidal ideations, and I was handcuffed and put into a police car for my "safety" quote-unquote, and taken to the hospital. Nothing about that felt safe, or caring, or yeah, like any of that for me, I felt like I was going to jail. And so, we know that our kids are going through so much right now, and at 37 years old, I am still learning techniques and tools to be able to just deal with life right now, because it's a lot, and I don't feel that our kids need to go through that same process to get older before they're actually like given more tools that can actually help them deal with life, point blank period, and what they're going through in the school system and at home. And I feel like right now, we are in a space where we can actually do something about that, and we don't have, you know, this is not the end-all-be-all, this is not the final step, it's not the official answer to helping our kids deal with, you know, what's going on in school and at home, but it is a step, and it's a radical step, and it's a step that will help them in so many ways. And so, again, we've sent you all emails, we've sent you all the petition that we have out now, and hope that we're able to get responses from you. Commissioner Burton, we have a meeting coming up and looking forward to that, but the rest of our Commissioners, we're, you know, excited to sit down and have more conversation about, yeah, how we can make this possible, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. And then we have one virtual citizen comment here, and that is DeWarren Langley. Mr. Langley, you have three minutes. Mr. Langley, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you so very much, I couldn't initially unmute. Good morning, my name is DeWarren Langley, and I serve as the volunteer executive director of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, where we- of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, where we foster the academic leadership and professional development of boys and young men of color. Our mission is to provide a comprehensive continuum of strategy-centered, skill-based, and career-focused program services and mentorship that go beyond theoretical knowledge, emphasizing a practical and strategic approach to prepare our boys and young men for academic success and success in the competitive workforce. I wanted to bring to the Board's attention an event that occurred on March 1st, the Boys of Color Power, which stands for Pathways of Opportunity, Where Leaders Emerge Resilient Academy. Our theme was strengthening minds, igniting brilliance, and building resilience, where we served over 60 boys of color, where they developed a growth mindset, strengthened self-identity and confidence, enhanced emotional intelligence, and built a strong network. The purpose of the event was for them to identify leadership and resilience, equip them with actionable plans to thrive both in schooling and in the community, build the confidence for their own identities, and contribute to the community at large. Our keynote speaker was Kamal Bell, the founder and farmer at Secopa Farm, that talked about agricultural entrepreneurship, as well as agriculture in general, and the changing dynamics of food in our community. We also had a workshop facilitator, Dr. DeLeon Gray, that focused on fostering inclusive school environments and helping to develop our students with a sense of belonging, purpose, and excelling academically and embracing their identities with confidence and pride. I shared this event with you all because, in order for us to ensure the success of our boys and young men of color in this community, it requires investment. And it requires investment, and organizations and initiatives that are producing measurable results. I come before you as an organization that is not currently funded or supported financially by the county, seeking investment to support the critical work that we're doing in this community. And I'll be reaching out to commissioners individually so that we can have a more in-depth conversation. And as you all hear from organizations that will be presenting this morning, please consider the return on investment from the multi-years of investment for some of these initiatives that you all have funded, and ask yourselves, are we getting the results we need for the investment that we are making? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Langley, Dewon Langley. I've known him for years, I don't know why I said that. Okay. There were a few people that may have come in after the sign-up period for a public comment. If there's anyone else that would like to make a public comment, now is your opportunity to do so. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a ceremonial item. This is a proclamation for the National Public Health Week, and I've asked Commissioner Valentine to read it for us.
Yes, so proclamation for the National Public Health Week. Whereas, the week of April 7, 2025, marks National Public Health Week. With the theme, it starts here, emphasizing the importance of making a positive impact on our homes, communities, and state. And whereas, the 30th anniversary of the National Public Health Week celebrates significant achievements, including: A dramatic decline in HIV/AIDS-related deaths, with treatment advancements allowing many people with HIV to live full, healthy lives; A decrease in smoking rates from 25.5% in 1994 to 11.4% today through public awareness, smoking bans, and tobacco taxes; A reduction in childhood mortality from 13.8 to 5.4 deaths per 1,000 live births, thanks to vaccines, improved healthcare, and better nutrition; Progress in mental health care, with more individuals receiving support, thanks to expanded services and a growing understanding of mental health needs; A significant reduction in childhood-led exposure from 4.4% to under 0.5% due to important policy changes; Increased recognition of how environmental factors like climate change can affect health, with efforts like cooling centers and public health campaigns to address these concerns; Advancements in preparedness for health threats, including innovations like mRNA technology and global vaccine distribution. And whereas, it is recognized that certain communities continue to experience health challenges due to factors like access to resources, environmental conditions, and availability of healthcare services. And whereas, public health organizations use National Public Health Week to inform policymakers, professionals, and the public about ongoing efforts to improve health across the United States. And whereas, public health professionals play a vital role in supporting communities to prevent health issues, recover from emergencies, and promote long-term wellness. And whereas, ongoing support for public health efforts can help shift the focus from treating illness, preventing disease, and encouraging healthy living. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Durham County that April 7 through the 13th, 2025, shall be designated as Public Health Week in Durham County, and call upon all residents to observe this week by recognizing the contributions of public health in improving the health of our country or our county, and promoting overall well-being for all. Remember, it starts here.
And then Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I am Dr. Jenkins, Public Health Director for Durham County. And it's my distinct honor to thank this great Board for not only changing your protocol for us public healthers, but also for this great proclamation. We think it not, we thank you for thinking not robbery to recognize us, whereas proclamations are normally done during regular sessions. So again, we thank you. Public health in Durham is many things, and we concede that we still have a lot of work to do. But what is public health? I submit to you all today that there's nothing like us, nothing. We are the ones that continue to step up when others step back. We are the ones that sees disparities not as statistics, but as calls to action. We are the ones who push for change even when the systems we challenge, like these days and times, are pushing back against us. From the lab to the legislative chamber, from emergency response to everyday prevention, please note that our work is woven into the very fabric of life itself. We are not just responding to crises, we are preventing them. We are not just addressing disparities, we are doing our best to dismantle them. We are not just raising awareness, we continue to do our best to drive action. So again, we thank you, Board of County Commissioners, Durham County, for your unwavering support and your continued belief in what we do. On behalf of the 230-plus public health employees, and on behalf of our Board of Health, chaired by Dr. Roger McDougall, we say to you again, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Any comments, Commissioner Burton?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for the wonderful work that you do in leading in your team of people in the Department of Public Health, coming from the schools. I see firsthand the work that you all do in the schools, bringing people into the building, talking about dental care, nutrition, everything like that. And I just want to say, you know, job well done. So thank you for everything that you're doing, the people that work with you, because I know it's a team effort.
Thank you so much, and we certainly cherish our partnership that we have with Durham Public Schools and continue to enhance it at every level.
Dr. Jenkins, I do not consider it robbery to recognize public health during this session. And so, thank you for standing in the gap at a time in our nation where truth seems like it's being turned upside down, that there's been a reversal in the commitment to medical science and research. And so, we need more people like you and people who are members of your team to continue to step in the gap or stand in the gap on behalf of the residents here in Durham County. It's a very important time in our history, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Also, a Board of Health member, we certainly appreciate your support. And again, to the audience, please note it's been a long, a long five years. It's been a long five years. But our car speeds on its way. We are resilient, fit to fight, and ready to win. Thanks again.
Okay, and I'll say, I think this proclamation is very timely because our nation is under the health sciences, health systems are under assault nationally. And I really appreciate this. I appreciate the proof written, the facts written in this proclamation. And I can't wait to see this continue to go forward. Dr. Jenkins, you've done an outstanding job here, and I'm really excited to work with you here, so.
Much appreciated, I surely.
Oh, hearts and minds are settled here. All right, the next on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have quite a few consent items for your consideration. Some will be on the next agenda for the regular session for approval. A couple may be on the following one. Please let us know if you have questions, staff are here to answer, and if we don't have it, we will follow up. The first one is 250074, award of contract with Innovative Emergency Management in the amount of $98,853 for the Joint City and County Crisis Communications Plan. Okay, the next one is 250103, Approval of Updated Memorandum of Agreement with Durham Public Schools for Shelter Sites.
County Manager, good morning.
Good morning.
So I actually already have the answer to this question, but I just wanted to go on record. I didn't find the schools that were specifically identified for the purpose of the agreement, but since I've asked the question, that information has been provided, so thank you.
Very good. And we'll make sure that information is included on the agenda when it goes for approval. The next one is 251108, Approval of Contract to Install a Partial Roof Replacement at Durham County Southwest Library Using Capital Fund Set Aside for the Purpose of Roofing, Lifecycle Replacement, in Amount of $71,000. The next one is 250014, Approve Lease Agreement Between Baker's Dozen LLC and Durham County at Shops at Hope Valley for a 10-year term with an annual lease amount of $30,250 and an annual common area maintenance in the amount of $4,875, with other terms as noted in the attached lease agreement. The next one is 250116, Authorization to Execute Amendments to the Service Agreement and Cooperative Agreement for Participation-Induced Energy Green Source Advantage Program in Alignment with the County's Renewable Energy Plan. The next one is 250123, Authorization to Enter into a Contract with Siemens Industry for the Replacement of Fire Alarm Systems at Six Durham County Facilities in the Amount of $335,149.
County Manager, if we could just have the facilities also included in that for the regular session?
Yes, yes, sir, we can.
And at 250114, we've been briefed on this matter in the past, but if we could have also included the total amount that comes from those leases as part of the package?
Yes, sir, we can do that. Go add that. The next one is 250138, Approval of Contract Amendment for Sanford Electrical Contractors LLC for Electrical Services in the Amount of $19,504.97. Bring the total amount to $139,504.97. The next one is 250143, Execution of a Contract with Summit Design and Engineering Services, Inc., for Construction Materials Testing and Special Inspections for the New Durham County Sheriff's Training Facility in the Amount of $128,550 plus 10% contingency in the Amount of $12,855.
I had a question about that one. I just wanted to know, what's the timeframe for the training facility to be built?
Okay, and we will have a staff member come and share those details. Joel Jones.
Morning, Commissioners. The timeframe on the training facility, we're looking at a 22-month construction duration. Hope to start in May, so 22 months from May.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, the next one is 250144, Approval of Soul Source Exemption for Utilities Division Purchase of Reclaimed Water Compression in the Amount of $23,409.11. The next one is 250146, Authorization of an Amendment to Design Contract with RND Architects, PA for Design Development and Construction Administrative Services, related to the Durham County Sheriff's Training Facility in the Amount of $186,000. There's a design contingency of 5%, totaling $47,425.
Manager?
Yes.
So for the regular session, since 250143 and 250146 seems to be, or not seems to be, are part of the same sort of transaction, can that appear as one item?
In sequential, we try to approve the contracts separately, but we will see what we can do order-wise on the agenda, so at least they're in a sequential order. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next one is 250153, Authorize County Manager to Execute a Standard Non-Reimbursable Utility Agreement and Any Other Required Documents for the Relocation and Upsizing of a Durham County Lift Station and Related Appurtenances for Lumney Road Multifamily. The next one is 250154, Approve and Authorize the Manager to Sign the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the County of Durham and City of Durham for the Purchase and Storage of Sodium Chloride. The next one is 250156, This is to Upgrade the BAS Building Automation System with Schneider Electronic for the HHS and Courthouse Buildings for the Amount of $774,045. The next one is 250163, Approval of Easement D to the City of Durham for Side Mark Easement at 750 Stadium Drive. The next one is 250167, A Subordinate Ordinance Amendment to Approve the Appropriation of General Fund Balance Totalling $452,437 to Increase the Expenditure Authorization for the Sheriff's Office Medication Assistant Treatment Grant, and to Classify These Funds as Restricted.
Manager, restricted meaning for only that intended purpose, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Okay, the next one is 250173. The Board has requested to approve the Department of Health to administratively write off $996,162 in uncollectible debt with two electronic health record systems no longer in use.
I had a question about that once, to explain, I just want some more explanation around that, because that's a significant amount of money, so, yeah.
So, we have the authority to write off uncollectible debt after a certain period of time. There is a process that occurs to review the information, both in the department, as well as in finance, as well as our attorneys. Legally, you just can't write off debt, it has to be uncollectible, and the cost associated with maintaining this is higher than what we've been able to collect in recent years. So, this administrative process happens rarely, but is required at times to reconcile our books.
And is it because the system is just outdated? No, it's just obsolete?
Well, we are now using a new system, and we've sunset these many years ago. And when we do these transitions, we continue for a period of time. Many of these are greater than seven years old, and so, that's also the context of it. Again, we don't do this often, and if there are other questions, we can weigh in.
Thank you.
Did I cover it? All right, thanks. Okay, the next one is 250180, approval of contract amendment with Brain Specialty Company in the amount of $100,000 for the detention center. The next one is 250181, authorize the county manager to execute an amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of Durham governing the development of a new Durham cultural roadmap by the Durham Cultural Advisory Board.
I had a question about that one. I just wanted a little bit more explanation as to what is happening with this, so I don't know if someone can explain that to me?
Yes, we have Brenda Hayes-Bright, who is the county liaison to the cultural roadmap planning.
Good morning. I'm Brenda Hayes-Bright with County Engineering. I wear about three hats in my role. I'm a project manager, manage the public art program, and also the county liaison to the cultural roadmap plan. And we've been continuing to work on the cultural roadmap planning with the City of Durham as our colleagues, and they have been managing. I also have with me Rebecca Holmes, who's the cultural and public art manager at the City of Durham, and she's been shouldering the load for this project, and I would like her to be able to speak on where we are.
Good morning, Rebecca Holmes. Can you hear me okay? Sure. So right now, we're in Phase Two of the cultural roadmap. It's basically a plan that's going to help support the arts and cultural sector throughout all of Durham County, and we've hired MJR consultants to help dig deeper into the engagement phase. We anticipate that the budgeting report will be available in October, and that Phase Three will ultimately lead to a plan that will be presented to you and also City Council for adoption. So that's where we are. We're in the engagement and learning phase. We've done a first report. We have Phase One report available to the public, and it sort of outlines some key themes and strategies for us to implement in Phase Two and make sure that we've heard correctly and bring that sort of themes and priorities to the public. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, I was reading it last night. I wasn't like quite sure exactly what it was trying to accomplish, so you helped. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, 240183, approve acceptance of a previous surface conservation easement for permanent open space, and this is 19.3 acres. The next one is 250186, approval of subaward agreement to Central Pines Regional Council in the amount of $142,799 to implement the client intake process and manage contractors conducting low-income residential energy efficiency improvements and minor home repair associated with the energy burden and emissions reduction program. And our last consent agenda item is 250187. This is to authorize the county manager to execute a subaward agreement with the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association for $49,820 to provide program design and support for the energy burden and emissions reductions program. That concludes consent items.
Thank you, Manager Hager, I appreciate that. Any further comments from Commissioner Valentine or Commissioner Burton? All right, very good. And as you said, some of those will be in the different regular meetings that we have coming up here. I appreciate you reading out all of those. In the work session, I think it's important to do that. We don't necessarily do that in the regular session. All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussion items. We have 170 minutes set for this. I am going to be keeping time, so we can get started.
Okay, the first one, sir, is a request to suspend the rules and to approve a contract.
Okay. Since this is a work session, we generally don't vote on items, but since we need approval for this contract, we need to vote first to suspend the rules, and then we'll do a separate vote on what the pleasure of the board is to approve, to allow Manager Hager to enter into a contract with Premier Sports Light Lighting for an upgrade of the field light in the Durham County Memorial Stadium.
Chair Lee, move that we suspend the rules?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. I'll accept a motion to authorize Manager Hager to enter this contract.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. That too passes unanimously. And so we will go back into the rules, since it was just for that particular motion, okay? We don't need a motion to go back into the rules. Okay. The next item looks like here, presentation from the Museum of Life and Science. Yeah, that's right.
Fantastic. The board is requested to receive a presentation from the Museum of Life and Science, and we're so excited to have them here, one of our partners in the community that does such a phenomenal job of inspiring our youth as well as our adults as well, because I get inspired every time I go about the importance of life and science and how it helps us to thrive. So I will now turn the program over to Carrie, the executive director.
We need you to press the little...
Okay, thank you so much, Manager Hager. Thank you so much, all Commissioners. It's an honor to be here. Thank you so much for inviting us. As Manager Hager said, my name's Carrie Heinannen. I'm the president and CEO at the Museum of Life and Science. I'm here with my colleagues, Deisha Dewan, who's our VP for Advancement, and Roy Griffiths, who is our VP for Planning and Exhibits. I will also say that informally, the museum is known internally as the museum that Roy built. He's been designing and building our exhibits for 35 years, and I hope you'll agree that he's done an exceptional job at that. So this morning, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to remember a little bit of the history of the museum and life and science. We want to give you an updated report. The Commission, Durham County has been incredibly generous in supporting the museum's work over the years, and we want to give you an interim report on the work that we're doing, and then we want to give you a little bit of visibility into where we're heading in the near future. So with that said, I'm going to spare you going all the way back to 1946, but suffice it to say that next year, we will be celebrating 80 years of serving Durham community. And as you can see from the 2000s to present, we definitely do not sit on our laurels. There's a lot happening at the museum. All I'm going to say about those green items, those are items that were supported with Durham County bonds over the years, and for those of you who have been out to see them, I hope you would agree that they're exceptional exhibitions. In fact, most recently, two of our most recent exhibits, Play to Learn and Earth Moves, were actually entered into an international design competition, and each of those placed among exhibits that were designed by major corporations. That's all they do is design exhibits. Durham is so lucky that we have an exceptional team internally at the museum that actually designs those exhibits for Durham, with Durham residents in mind. A little bit of history as well. So this past year, we went ahead and did an updated strategic long-term plan. What you'll see here is that the central idea we landed on is the idea of the Museum of Life and Science being a community connector. Our mission, restated as sparking curiosity and respect for nature and science among our community, and we'd love to see our vision for the future is a community that is connected to science and invested in playful learning as a way of understanding that, enriching all of us and the world we live in. Looking back at the last fiscal year that was completed, you'll see that we're a very healthy organization, 640,000 visitors last year, that was up 60,000 from the previous year. Our annual budget is growing. You'll also see there that we welcome about 107 of those visitors free through a variety of means. That includes Durham Community Days. As you know, we do about 22 free community days a year. School groups that we welcome free for Durham Public Schools, 4,000 educators, and then we also welcome all those who are under three years old free to the museum. We have a membership-focused organization. We really like for people to be invested in the organization as members. We have 17,000 household memberships. Of those, 1.2 are of the affordable type of memberships, which we offer to our Ignite community partners. We have about 20 community partners that identify families in need. They're offered $5 memberships for a year. They have unlimited access to the museum. They visit about 17,000 times. And then, of course, we've got the programs that we've got going on day in and day out, campers, school groups, community programs. I want to share with this group, I think we did share it last year as well, but in the course of our long-term strategic planning, we were, our canopy strategic partners who did that work with us, did a look at how we were doing in serving our community. You'll see the market here with regard to household income is in the dark black boxes, and then the museum's audience as a percentage is in blue. So you can see that we're over-indexed in serving those households with income under $35,000. Now, I will say that gives us an opportunity to bring our index up on those with incomes of $150 to $150 to $250, where we hope they can be subsidizing some of our other memberships. Similarly, when you look at the market when it comes to demographics, the museum is doing a good job of serving the community as it is here in Durham, and we look forward to continuing to ensure that the museum serves our community appropriately. So how are we serving our community? Well, one, we look to tackle issues that are relevant to our community, and we know that climate is important and top of mind for many of those in our community. How are we doing that? Youth Climate Summit. We are beta-testing and in the process of building out a climate exhibit at the museum through our red wolf conservation. You may know, since we visited you, we did welcome five red wolf pups in the museum's breeding program. As you know, the only state in the Union in which red wolves live in the wild is here in North Carolina. It's an important conservation effort. And since we last met, the museum was awarded a $23 million NOAA grant, allowing us to set up a Center for Collaborative Heat Monitoring, which would have us leading a multi-regional program, working with historically marginalized communities, 32 of them across the country, in doing this important work of collecting heat data. We've had our fourth North Carolina Youth Climate Summit. We welcome youth from across the state. It's a two-day program. We welcome a lot of scientists, academics, talking with kids about climate. They make their own climate action plans to take back to their own communities. We're really proud of this program. It is 100% youth-led, so we welcome them to the museum, but they put the program together. I just spoke about our Center for Collaborative Heat Monitoring. I will say of the Centers for Excellence at NOAA, they do tend to be set up at universities, and we're very proud. The Museum of Life and Science is one of very few museums that is housing a center of excellence. Second, on community engagement, we've really staked acclaim in the area of community co-creation. The museum is very committed to working with community groups and community members in creating our programs. I mentioned Youth Climate Summit. Similarly, with our climate exhibit, you'll see that we intend to feature local organizations prominently in that exhibit as we're developing it, and we're working with local scientists and climate activists in order to develop that exhibit. Sparking Interest is a NASA grant that we have, where we're working to encourage STEM engagement among Spanish-speaking individuals, and that program continues to go forward. Our Black Excellence in Science is an annual program that we put up. We do that on a Durham Community Day. We're very excited that that program more and more is community-led, and we're working with Black scientists and Black youth and young Black geniuses like Ava, our science genius who comes and does programming for us. Another way we're serving the community is really connecting with RTP. Of course, RTP's in our backyard. We want to be the venue to help all of those organizations developing all scientific and technological advancements, sharing those with the public. Our bond dollars are going toward a new biotech exhibit that's in process right now. That will also include an updated lab space, where we'll invite community practitioners, academics from all the local universities, as well as those representing biotech companies to come in and engage our visitors. In addition to that, we're working on expanding our adult programming, bringing all those scientific advancements, not just to children of our region. And then looking at how we develop the future workforce, another way of saying that is supporting science education in our community. We are an informal science education resource. We look to narrow the educational gap by the work we do. We look to support DPS deeply every year and expanding that partnership wherever we can. And finally, we're really digging in on our early childhood programming. We see that as the top of the funnel in creating tomorrow's workforce. We really want to spark excitement and interest in science among kids. So how do we do that with the community? I mentioned earlier Ignite partners. All of these partners in the community help us identify those families that we ensure get those $5 memberships. Durham Community Days, we talked about that. That's free entry for Durham County residents. We welcome five children for every adult also. Adult county resident can come in. And this past year, we increased visitorship on Durham County, Durham Community Days by 14%. So very committed to ensuring those days are incredibly welcoming, ensuring that our whole community can see themselves in the sciences when they come and join us on those days. Talked about expanding that partnership with DPS. We're very excited about, in particular, about our fifth grade partnership. We've worked with three schools now. I think we're in our fifth year. We're reporting on the finalized of the, we'll be working into our fifth year next year. Our fourth year is going on right now, and you can see results from three years of work here. We're putting an informal science educator into fifth grade classrooms at the neediest schools, the schools that have the most progress to make when it comes to end-of-grade science scores. You can see that having, and this is a weekly program, the museum sends educators into the fifth grade classrooms. It's a program that provides teacher training, professional development for the teachers who are there, and provides engaging science education for the students who are there. What you'll see in this chart is that we make a big impact coming into that classroom and that those results are maintained in subsequent years. Can say that... Can say that with DPS and with the Durham Public School Foundation, we're actually looking to find funding to roll this program out to every fifth grade in DPS. Right now, we're in fi, we're in ten fifth grades this year. And finally, our, our expanded pre-K program. Again, this is, this is providing engaging facilitated programming for those under five. We know that access to quality pre-K is actually a big indicator of high school STEM success, and so we want to be a resource for this community, ensuring that as many of our, our pre-Kers get on campus, get excited by the ideas of science and what that means for them, and also inspiring parents to understand the good work they're doing by engaging with their kids around scientific inquiry and cognitive development. Looking forward, or actually looking present for us, if you've come up to the campus, you'll see there are places that are a bit of a mosh pit right now. Mud, mud is flying. We are underway in putting up a butterfly house pavilion. So this is a space that was, in previous years, a temporary tent, and we're, we are in progress right now. The roof is actually going up now, and we're looking forward to opening that up in May. This is a beautiful pavilion that the community will be able to use. It's also a really great resource for us in terms of fiscal, fiscal sustainability and our ability to, to rent that space out. So it's for our programming and for, and for others. We're also smack in the middle of a biotech exhibit development. We're working very closely with all of our partners in the RTP. We're working closely with many of, of our corporations and with scientists in academia. Our Climate and Sustainability Exhibit is in process. We're, we're actually going to be opening a climate coffee bar in the museum as part of that. That'll open before the exhibit itself will open in early twenty-six, but we welcome any of you to come up. We'd love to give you a hard hat tour, show you what the progress looks like on those efforts. Here's a little bit of a, a design rendering of what that pavilion is looking, looking like. I will point out, a lot, a lot of the dollars for this pavilion came from an appropriation from the state. The, the museum has gone back and looked, looking to identify ways for the state to support us as well. This was in a million-dollar appropriation. We actually do have a, a bill on the House floor as well, looking for a matching gift of one point five million to update our lab. Since we, we're fortunate enough to, to receive the 2022 bond, of course, we've experienced a few hiccups in the world order, and inflation and other issues are pressing us on funding, so we're out actively looking to raise funds. We really are committed to delivering the projects we, we shared that we would deliver on time, on budget, and with, with the amenities that they promised for the community. So what else are we doing going forward? We're looking to advocate for public transportation to the museum. I want to thank this body for supporting some, some testing to get that done. We are in the process of identifying and looking to roll out a new membership model that would focus on SNAP and EBT recipients, giving them another affordable way to join the museum as members. We are out developing programming for adults and for teens. We restarted this year a Teen Science Cafe, which is being very, very generously attended. Talked about rolling out the fifth-grade science projects across DPS, seeking funding for that along with DPS Foundation. And we really are looking to maintain our pre-K programming for the museum. The initial facilitated programming was funded by an ARPA grant, and we've, we're actively looking for new grants so that we can continue that funding. Again, as I mentioned, we are out investing in grant applications, looking far and wide. We just received a grant from a foundation up in, in Pittsburgh. We are looking to take advantage of the new renovated spaces that we'll have at the museum, and I mentioned the, the appropriation we're looking at. Again, I want to thank you for, to the team for supporting a, a test that we're planning to, to look at ways to get public up to the museum. And then, just giving you some visibility in terms of where we sit, we are at about ninety-five percent developed on the land that we're sitting in at the museum, and so that's some things that we're looking at, is how do we continue to grow and serve our growing community with, with a finite space? And, and, and so that's a, that's a challenge for us, and the future, we'll look forward to continuing to talk with you about what that might mean for us. This is just an example of the green areas on the museum's yellow space, identify how we've developed, developed our campus over the years. And with that, I just want to thank you again very much for the opportunity to address the board, to bring you up to speed, and again, to reiterate and re-extend an invitation to all of you to come up and, and visit the museum in person.
Thank you for this wonderful presentation. Y'all always gonna hear about me being a former educator, so working for Durham Public Schools. I think every year, there was a class that went to Museum of Life and Science, and I worked in Wake County Schools. People from Wake County would come to.
We like that.
Museum of Life and Science. So it's really a wonderful treasure that we have here in Durham. You know, it's a really big light shiner, so thank you for your presentation. I will take your offer to come visit.
Good.
Because I haven't been in a very long time. So I need to see, I want to see all these new exhibits and how things have changed. I also want to say, Ava, I taught her kindergarten through fifth grade.
Oh, you're kidding.
Yes, I did. I was a school librarian at her school, had her kindergarten through fifth grade. So, yes, matter of fact, we had lunch together on Friday with her mom. So, but the question I have is, I had some questions.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, dear. I was wondering, which schools do you serve for the fifth grade?
You know, I knew you were gonna ask that, and I don't have the, I don't have those dates, those names in my pocket, but I, we will turn that around for you this afternoon.
Thank you. I would like to know that, because, be it, you know, at the elementary level, K-five media coordinator, you know, the fifth-grade science test, things like that, making sure kids are ready for that. And I know there were some schools, some kids that struggled with it, and just having that knowledge with them, having that knowledge, that's, that helps, and also the professional development with the teachers. So I really want to commend you for that work, and I would like to learn a little bit more about that and how you partner with DPS Foundation to make that happen. And also figuring out ways, how do we get more of our, more marginalized communities coming to the Museum and Life and Science, is something that I would really love to talk more about. Growing up in Chicago, we had access to these wonderful museums for free. I know they're not free now, but back in the day, when I was growing up, they were free and they were great experiences, and I want to make sure all of our children have access. So I look forward to talking with you more, but thank you all for what you do. This is great.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. We'll look forward to following up with you on that.
Yes, thank you for your presentation today, and thank you for being the gem of Northern Durham. And so I can remember taking my children when they were little, they're, they're grown adults now, but when they were little, we used to frequent the museum on occasion. And when my daughter was a student at the School of Science and Math, she had an opportunity to have her prom there. And so I know firsthand the gem that the museum is. And so, you had talked about your partners. I think that North Carolina Central University might be primed to be one of your partners. Maybe you might want to, to look into that. And could you tell me a little bit more about the house bill that you, you talked about? I'm just curious.
Absolutely. So, one, School Science and Math Prom, still at the Museum of Life and Science this Saturday, in fact. Two, NCCU, yes, we've had several top-to-top meetings with our leadership and theirs, and, and Commissioner, Commissioner, Chancellor Dixon has an invitation, and we've been trying to get something on the, on the calendar to get her up and, and I'm familiar with the Museum of Life and Science. And then, the actual question was?
House bill.
House bill. So that is a, a house, a house bill that was introduced this, this session to, to have the, the legislature give a one-point-five-million-dollar matching grant to the museum to fund our interactive lab. The lab goes, is part and parcel of our Biosciences exhibit that we're working on right now. And so, we are actively working to, to encourage bipartisan support of this bill, and obviously, it's a, it's a challenging session, and so, so we remain hopeful, but, but don't necessarily have a, have a slam dunk of a process in front of us there.
We can share the, the language with you as well.
Okay, thank you. And like my colleague, Michelle Burton, Commissioner, I too will take you up on the offer to, to do a tour. It's been quite a while since I've been there.
Excellent. We'll look forward to that.
All right, and I've been saying I'm gonna take a tour for a little while with you.
Yes, you have been. I can attest to that.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah, since Jackie signed her. All right, so I do have a couple of questions here. Well, I guess it's just one, a larger one. You mentioned a partner with NOAA, N-Y-A, and some of the grants and so forth. What impact is the, the national climate?
Yeah.
If you will? What do you project the impact that would be on the museum?
Well, our, the impact it's had thus far is quite a bit of anxiety for those working on those grants. We've had some stop-and-start moments, given, given the level of uncertainty from, from the federal government. And however, right now, we, all of our grants are moving forward. We've kind of taken the tact of heads, head down, do the work, don't talk about the work, just do the work, and we will continue to run until apprehended. We're just continuing to make that happen. That said, as we're budgeting forward, we're being very mindful about what might happen in the event that, that some of these, some of this grant money goes, goes away or is closed down. So we're being cautious, we're proceeding cautiously. I would say there are other issues at the federal level that are concerning. I think I wrote to each of you with regard to the Institute for Museum and Library Services. The, the, the entire department was put on leave, indefinite leave last week, with some, several of the leaders dismissed. The Institute for Museum and Library Services is, is a resource for museums, libraries, zoos, aquaria, a, a major swath of informal educational institutions across the country, and we all rely on them for helping us to gather best practices, for helping to coordinate efforts. And so, that, that also is deeply concerning for us, so any voice you can lift for our federally elected officials, and so, would be greatly appreciated.
All right, I really appreciate that. And I too, we've been to the museum many, many times with the kids, and it is one of those things that I hear about no matter where I go in the state, I hear about that. Is the museum landlocked? Like, is there any place for expansion? If you look at the chart that you had, well, it's not updated.
I know, okay.
The chart that you had.
Yes.
And the, the space used.
We're primarily.
Are running kind of low.
We're running kind of low. We're, we're surrounded on three, I think, I guess I would say, three sides by neighborhoods, and so residential areas. We had, we did in the past couple of years, look, there was a house that was adjacent to the museum that we attempted to, we attempted to purchase, and unfortunately, they sold it to a developer at a much above market, market rate. So, you know, that said, we are, we would be open and interested to making those happen. And then, to our west immediately is, we're on Durham Park, Durham Parks and Rec has that swath of land. It was, it, that was a piece of land that I believe the Sports Commission had looked at in the past, and therefore, we have also done some, some analysis on what, on, if the city would be interested in seeing some of that land developed for museum expansion, we were open to that possibility as well. Because we do sit on city land on long-term lease.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was just concerned about, I, I would imagine there could be expansion. I was just curious.
We've got ideas for miles.
I have no doubt about that. All right. One more question.
Yeah, I'm a history buff, so I wanted to, you don't have to go into great detail about the Hester House and where the, in your presentation, where the Museum of Life and Science, you know, originally started. Where was that located?
That's down in North Gate Park. It's on lavender, I believe, and what's still there is actually a, what's that called?
The earth.
The earth.
Fire, the old fire.
The old fireplace, and the, the foundation is the word that I was looking for, is right there. We can add that to your tour.
That would be great.
All right, we thank you very much for this presentation. This has been excellent.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and again, thank you very much for supporting the organization and the community work we do.
And that was twenty-eight minutes and a half.
Yay!
Thank you.
Yeah, thirty minutes allocated. Very good.
Thank you.
We will next have a presentation from Maiden Durham on the Bowles Academies. We are excited to hear all the efforts that are happening, and Andy Miracle will transition the item, and we'll hear from the others.
Good morning, Commissioners, Manager, County Attorney. It is a pleasure to be here with you today. This will be the one, the first of three ARPA-related updates that we're bringing forward. The county has partnered with Maiden Durham for a number of years to support their workforce development programming. In August of 2023, the county entered into a three-million-dollar contract with Maiden Durham, using ARPA funds to scale and grow the Bowles Academies. I've previously provided a very high-level summary of the Bowles program, but today, we're gonna hear from the program creator and administrators of that program to provide a more thorough update. And with that, I will hand it off to Casey Steinmecker, who's Executive Director of Maiden Durham.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for having us. Just a warning, if Manager Hager hasn't warned you, we're very passionate about this work, so we might be taking the, the, the level up a little bit here today. I am going to be speaking today along with David Dotson. I'll let David introduce himself to you in a minute, but he, we consider David the founder of NBC, or I'm sorry, the founder of Maiden Durham as a result of his work at MDC, but we'll get into that in a middle, minute. I also want to make sure that I point out, we have our incredible team behind me here. Do not, if we have questions, we love for them to answer them directly for you, so you get a sense of the caliber and excitement that this group brings to the table. All I have to say to people when I introduce them is don't get between them and a young adult trying to create economic mobility for themselves, because you will not, it will not be pretty. They will fight to the death for that, for that young adult. We are really excited to be here because the county has been, as Andy said, a partner of ours for a long time. We've been in existence ten years. We're gonna talk a little bit about that existence in a minute, and you have been with us from the beginning. So it's really important for us, we really engage, very much enjoy doing presentations with you. We're gonna do a quick history, because you are, the three of you are new to this, to this work that we're doing here today, so we're gonna tell you a little bit about our history, and then we're gonna tell you about our current structure and work, what the actual work that it is that we do. It's very unique. We are not a program, we're a systems organization, and we'll explain that a little bit more in detail in a minute. And then, we're gonna talk to you about the Bowles. And then we're going to talk to you about the Bowles Academy. Cannot think of a better organization to follow up than Museum of Life and Science when we talk about the Bowles Life Science Academy that we have gone, going on through, through this program. And then a little bit of what's next, and hopefully some good integration with you all. Before we get started, though, I do want to say greetings from Dr. Victor Zhao. He is the Chairman of our Board. Victor was the Chair of the Committee, the Task Force, that looked at whether or not we should create this organization, and has subsequently been the Chair of this Board in its entire existence for 10 years. When he was originally on the Task Force, he was asked by David to chair that Task Force because he was the CEO of the Duke Health System, which was the largest employer in Durham and state of North Carolina at the time. Today, Dr. Zhao is the CEO of the National Academy of Science and Health at the National Institute of, at the National Institute of Health in Washington, D.C., and still chairs this Board. Is still actively passionate about Durham and Durham youth. His wife lives here, his children live here, his grandchildren live here, and he's really committed to this work. He wished he could be here, but unfortunately is often, where's he at today? Who knows?
Dubai.
Dubai usually, we're never sure where he's at. We will tell you, he never misses a board meeting, so. And David, David, you want to tell them a little bit about you before we get started?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's David Dodson. I'm a very long-term resident of Durham, almost a native, not quite. And for 25 years, I ran a nonprofit here in Durham, still it is in Durham, called MDC, which is concerned with expanding opportunity for people across the American South, particularly people whose circumstances keep them stuck at the bottom of the economic ladder. And it was that mission that inspired us in 2008, I think it was, at the behest of GlaxoSmithKline, to take a look at what was happening to young people in Durham County who were not completing school, not therefore going on to education after school, not in the workforce, and running in danger of being connected and enmeshed in the criminal justice system. So we produced this report, it has been 13 years, to look at what was then called the problem of disconnected youth, young people not connected to work, opportunity, or, or education. And it pointed out that we had a large problem hidden in plain sight. Just to skip ahead, that problem endures, and we are, as you know, as elected officials, sadly, a, a community with two faces. We have a significant number of young people who are not aware of working toward or connected to the enormous living wage opportunities that we have in our midst. In fact, it's, it's stunning to think how many young people are growing up in this community without a knowledge of world-class innovation that's happening in and just a few miles away. So our job at Maiden Durham was to not only create awareness of opportunity, but to create vigorous connections so that young people would aim for high-wage opportunities, believe they could get to them, have the support and channels, channels to get to them, and ultimately attain the Holy Grail, which is living wage employment in growth sectors of Durham that offer life-changing opportunities, not just to them, but particularly since we're talking about young adults, that offer a foundation for families of the future. So we didn't talk about it 13 years ago, but we are not only a systems change organization, we're a systems change organization that works on a two-generation strategy. If you change the trajectory of parents as and before they are having children, you change the trajectory of families. The other thing we are focused on is that we are a two-customer system. This is a very big difference between traditional workforce development and what Maiden Durham does. Our success is twofold. We succeed if youth and young adults, particularly those who are historically stuck at the bottom, get living wage employment. But that's not enough. We also have to satisfy the needs and expectations of employers who have those high-wage jobs. Because this is not a charity game. Employers will not hire people unless it's in their economic interest to do so. So we are trying to make a market in talent, homegrown talent, hence the term Maiden Durham. This is about young people who are made in Durham, connecting to opportunities that are being made in Durham, so they and Durham have a future. So I think that's what I'm going to say. But I could go on. I think our time is limited, but the organs are important. The last thing I'm going to say is, you saw Victor Zhao, who has a few other jobs, he's head of the National Institute of Medicine, setting national policy. He has continued to chair Maiden Durham since its inception, and we've been at this trial and error, now success, for 13 years, thanks to the county's deep investment. So thank you. That's our, that's, this is a homegrown success story. I will stop.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate it. So a little bit about us, you see on this, David told you, we came out of the MDC report, and the MDC report said we really should start a, they created a task force, and that task force, after about a year and a half, came back and said, we really should start a systems organization that really takes a look at this from a systems viewpoint. So that's really what Maiden Durham is. Our job really here is, and this is really important, as a systems organization, we sit atop of the education-to-career system for 14 to 25-year-olds. Now, there's a rationale that we came up with those numbers, I won't go into it, but back at the, back in the time, 13 years ago when we were started, that's where we had the best opportunity for career intervention at DPS, right? Below that, DPS didn't have a lot of career-related activity. So if we were going to play in the larger system, we had to go where the infrastructure already was. And so we went 14 to 25. And how we describe what it is we do right now is really as the systems organization that overs, oversits all of those community organizations, education institutions, and employers. We identify and attempt to address the gaps, barriers, and misalignment that exist in that system. So that we are helping, as David said, both the youth in Durham and the employers in Durham. It is a two, two-customer mission of what it is that we do. We honestly believe, every bit of data shows us, there is a future in Durham with multiple pathways. They just don't know about it, and they're just not connected for it, and they're just not ready for it. And so our job is to help the system fix that. Because we believe that all, truly believe that all of our youth have, should have the opportunity to participate in the economic prosperity that is Durham. We all know how well Durham does. I do want to focus on, first and second, that our goal is economic mobility. This is relatively new, guys, and just in terms of our wording, using economic mobility. Commissioner, you asked earlier what the feeling is with the national activity and everything going on. What we are doing, and talking to all of our partners in the system, is we worked with them to find some terminology that everyone could feel really comfortable with, and still meet our mission and goal. And so what we come up with is the concept of economic mobility. And we're doing a lot of, we'll talk a little bit this, about this later, we're doing a lot of deep dives, data-wise, in Durham, to take a look at who has economic mobility and who does not. And we know pretty well already from that, that data, that we will be helping, that we will be focused on, on the population group that we, David described earlier, because that is who, who is not getting economic mobility in this community, and why we need to do it. I bring that up to you only because in our work with the community, community organizations that we engage with, we are now actively working with them to adopt this goal in Durham. We've met with the Durham, Durham Public Schools Foundation, we've met with the Durham Chamber of Commerce Foundation, we've met with Duke University. We're all now starting to talk about the concept of economic mobility moving forward. So I wanted to point that one out, it's slightly different than what we've done before. We said earlier, we've been around a long time, we have. I just wanted to give you a real quick timeline here. We did a lot of work in our first four, five years at DPS. We helped create the 3-2-1 program at DPS, we worked really closely with the career CTE staff. We created a working, work-based learning collaborative of 25 nonprofits that were working with kids in that age group to ensure that they were getting engaged in CTE and career-related activities. COVID came along and kind of put that on hold with the rest of all of our lives. However, it gave us the opportunity that we're going to talk about today later on, and that's the Bowles Initiative. We got a call from the Research Triangle Park and the North Carolina Biotechnology Center and said, hey, while the rest of the world is shutting down, biopharma is going to explode, we're going to need a workforce, strong workforce, and right now in the triangle, Durham's our weak link. So we need you, Maiden Durham, to step up and help us figure this out, which is how we came up with the framework for the Bowles Initiative. And we'll come back to that a little bit later on. We now partner with Durham Tech and a whole bunch of community-based organizations and a whole bunch of employers in that program. What has made the huge difference, you will hear me say this often, your funding. Your ARPA funding allowed us to take a pilot into full scale. You will see some numbers today in this PowerPoint presentation that shows you the numbers that we are producing in this program right now, in terms of our ability to actually show proof of concept, which we know we've done moving forward. So what do we do? We have recently come to this analysis to help people understand how we actually operate. When we talk about a systems organization, what we're doing is talking about those, defining those misalignments, gaps, and barriers, and trying to find solutions. Our job as a systems organization is to define what is the goal, that economic mobility goal, what is the North Star, and how do all of our partners and their roles and in their systems work with us collaboratively to achieve that? And we do that through a bunch of different ways. We do it through advocacy, we do it through research, and occasionally, we do it through actually demonstrating the solution. So what you see on that first column is our system effectiveness, really working with all of the partners in the organization. That middle piece is the research and analysis that really allows us, we spend money, significant money on research and analysis, to look at the data constantly. By the way, and just to give you an example, in the, in the Bowles program that you're about to see, while we'll show you some data, a little bit of a data, please know that we collect over 200 data points on Bowles on a regular basis. It's a, it's, it's, we're very, very data-driven in this, in this work. And it's basically, it's because that's our, that's our beginnings. MDC was a data analysis organization, and we don't ever give that up. But as a result of that data, we often find solutions. Bowles was a solution. It was a solution that didn't, what needed, needed some, I would say tweaking for what was already in the existing system. And we chose to use that, the opportunity with ARPA to demonstrate how to do that for the system. Our goal, guys, is not to, I want to say this as we talk about Bowles from the beginning, when we get to that point, our goal was not to own the Bowles program. Our goal is to demonstrate how the Bowles program is, should be part of the normal, everyday system at DPS and Durham Tech. And we're very successfully doing that. They are partners, and they are working with us in doing that. And then we will go back to the next big issue that needs to be addressed and move forward. So real quick on that, how we operate with collaboratively, we are a three-partner system. We work extremely well with our community-based organizations, with our education institutions, and with our corporate employers. You see up on the screen just a few of them, and we'll talk about how we engage with them. I would say to you, one of the things we don't talk enough about is our community engagement work. We have really, really, and you'll see, you'll show some data, we'll show some data later, how we have flipped the switch on awareness, on life science, on opportunity for young adults, and especially young adults of color in this community, as a result of the work that we've been doing. I'll get into it a little bit more, but the, many of the, the community-based organizations you see right there are partners in the Bowles Initiative. And what I mean by partners is we've actually got a grant from the federal government, the Economic Development Administration, through the North Carolina Biotechnology Center. And what we are using that funding for is to provide capacity building inside each of these organizations that you see up here, and some additional as well, to be our eyes and ears out there. They are our, they help us identify, recruit, and support students into the program. Not only do they do that, but as part of doing the, being ambassadors of the program, we also have a professional learning community. And that professional learning community brings all of their staff in those groups to the table to learn how to do this work better, how to do trauma-informed success coaching, all of those things you don't know. So it's about building us all up together to do this work collaboratively together. I think it's been an aha moment for us and the Bowles to do it that way. We tended to not, nonprofits in Durham, if you don't know, there's, if you haven't heard the latest number, the Durham Chapel MSA has 4,700 registered nonprofits. We have narrowed that down to about 150 to 200 that are youth development organizations just in Durham. So it can be a relatively siloed, competitive group unless you force it to come together and work collaboratively together. And we have been, I think, ridiculously successful in doing that because these organizations believe in the same things we do, and that's really economic mobility. I just included in this a couple of, some of our ambassador feedback that you can see when we ask them, what is it, some of the quotes that we get to them about the work that they're doing, how valuable they find it to be. And even in the PLC, that's Performance Learning Collaboratives, we bring together to talk to them, it has profoundly impacted them on how they work with their youth. So it is, it is a, is a tool that we believe we can hopeful, we're going to be able to continue in the future. So all of this to say, the major amount of funding that we received from ARPA was in the, for the Bowles Academy. So what is the Bowles Academy? You heard me say earlier that what we were looking at was an opportunity from the biopharma industry to potentially take a look at creating a more diverse and direct pipeline for them during COVID and post-COVID. So we sat down as a group, as a board, and said, what is it that the criteria, if they're going to get into something like this, what should the industry sector look like? Is biopharma the right one for us? Well, we decided that what the key part, pieces of any industry sector we wanted to do is that it had to be high-growth, high-wage, there had to be a low barrier to entry. And what we mean by low barrier to entry, a short-term certification, that they could get in and get out and get into the industry. But the industry also had to have demonstrated progression. We didn't want someone to just get a job, we wanted them to get a career. So what was the progression? There had to be an identified gap in supply. We weren't going to put out a whole bunch of kids and then there wouldn't, there was no demand for them. So it had to be a gap in supply, and we needed committed industry partners that came to the table. And we were lucky that we had the North Carolina Biotechnology Center and those, that group that came to the table, high-growth, high-wage, life science, biotech, met all of those criteria. So as we got in, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at structural, equitable access. You've heard us say that over and over again. And we wanted to make sure that what we did was creating marketable skills in the shortest amount of time. And what we ended up doing over here, key components, these were the original key components. We really enhanced all of these. But what, these key components are things that aren't necessarily provided in the normal system, and/or are in the system but not at a high enough level to, to meet the population group that we are attempting to meet. So what we added here is ensure that students have success coaching, that they have a resource coach, that there's on-demand tutoring when they're going through the program, that there's, when we say resource, there's things like available laptops and internets, daycare, transportation. We, what we have been able to do with the county money, when we first did our demonstration, we got a small grant from the Oak Foundation, who's big believers in this work, to try it. But with that pilot, the county said, yes, we'll buy in, let's try this. And they put the first $250,000 in for stipends for the first 25,000, 25 students. And since then, we'll see in a minute how many have gone through the program. But it also has guaranteed job interviews from employers and alumni group. We started as students go through the program. We don't talk a lot, a lot about this, but we also know that their ability to be successful is very much dependent upon social capital. All the research shows social capital really important, so as they get in there, they're working inside the organization, oftentimes with people that they would not normally have access to, that were helping them use that social capital.
Did you mention industry certification?
Yes. Oh, yeah. When I talk about marketable skills in shortest amount of time, the reason this program works beautifully and uniquely, and why we're having a little bit of difficulty finding the next industry sector, although we've done a lot of analysis, when the North Carolina Biotechnology Center started 40 years ago, they actually created, working with the industry sector, created an entry-level certification. It's called BioWork. And they put it together, and they made, as they recruited companies come in, into the, into the state, they made the, the companies agree that this would be the standard, gold standard, for people to get a job, entry-level job, this BioWork certification. This was for the entire state of North Carolina, and the community colleges around the state have been doing it a long time. What we wanted to do was create a subset of that BioWork program for young adults of color who would need some extra attention, extra time, extra engagement, even quite frankly, a lot of awareness of life science. They hadn't, well, trust me when I tell you, no awareness of life science whatsoever when we first started this initiative. So we spent a lot of time on the awareness side. What makes this such a great program is when they come out with that BioWork certificate, they are golden. They are, they, they are. They are, they are able to be eligible for a job in the life science industry that starts in the $20 to $25 an hour range. That's an entry-level position. If they stay, if they then go on and take a state exam, a national exam for BioWork, for this work, they, I tell everybody, that's what gets them to the front of the line and it's top of the wage level. But anyone graduating from the certification program is eligible for that job. And you'll see in a minute how well we're doing in doing that work. We talked a little bit when we did that analysis. Here's what we looked at, and we ended up with the manufacturing area, the technician and operators, clean room associate. That is the certification, the BioWork certification fits perfectly with that work. And so, you can see that there, we did an analysis on that. That also has, I didn't bother doing this for the amount of time that we have, but there's also a progression within that industry sector as well that you can see that's very, very good ladder. Again, we talked to you about how we do this work in our community education and corporate. Here's how it's organized right now. In the community, the community helps us with awareness, engagement, recruitment, and support. MID leads that, okay? When I, what I mean by that was when we first did this analysis with Durham Tech, what Durham Tech said to us for this program, it's taught, that BioWork program is taught at Durham Tech, what they said to us is, we do not have, JB, President Buxton said, you have a much better understanding of the demographic you're working on, you're working with. We would prefer that you own awareness, engagement, recruitment, and selection. We actually select who gets into the program with the support of Durham Technical Community College. The actual education classroom, the lab work, goes on, led by Durham Tech. They have a resource coach, a success coach. We have additional success coaches. We have come to the conclusion, as we've scaled this, we need more than one because we've gotten the money to put more people through it. So we've added success coaches. We also do on-demand tutoring. And by the way, some of that tutoring is actually now done by our alumni, who've been through the program, gotten a job, and understand what it was like when they were sitting in those seats. And so they do that work. And then the last part, obviously, is the corporate piece. That is co-led by Durham Tech and Made in Durham. And we help students actually go to career fairs, do interviews, and actually work with them. We lead the Alumni Association and lead, work with them on progression inside the industry sector. So it's very, it's very aligned. We have all of our partners that work with us on a daily basis. It is a unique system of, of organizations coming together for the good of the youth, who wouldn't normally think to do that, and work collaboratively together on this academy. So while we sit here and talk about the Bowles Academy from the perspective of Made in Durham, we lead it. We've got lots of partners that execute it with us, lots of partners. So let's talk about how we did. We want to show you here, as you, as you can see, when we first got started, we were learning how to do this work, right? By the way, they're in cohorts. That's, that's a little bit different than what Durham Tech was doing at the time, because at COVID, they went to online, did a lot of online stuff, and they stayed that way. They do both now. We do cohorts. So each cohort, as you can see in the first one, is the enrollment. The second is the number that actually graduated. The third column is the actual graduation rate. We've done nine cohorts to date. 10th is scheduled for graduation, May? May 27th, and we would have, would love to have you all attend. Please come there, it's amazing. So they're in right now, and we should, should be able to graduate pretty soon. But you can see through this chart how working collaboratively together between all of those organizations, what I've described to you didn't start in Cohort 1. It started around Cohort 5 or 6. We did the first ones ourselves early on with Durham Tech. We added, we added more staff at Durham Tech. We added more success coaches on our end, and then we added the community-based organizations. And you can see the progression of our students. Our students, again, are 18- to 25-year-old students that are Durham residents. Up on the right-hand side, you can see that we've had 175 enrolled, 132 actually graduated. Now, I do want to take a second to talk about graduation. Do not think for a minute this is easy, ladies and gentlemen. There are 10 data points you have to pass in order to be able to pass this certificate. You have to have an 80% average on your classroom assignments, an 80% average on your lab assignments. And then you must have an 80% or better in each of the eight chapter tests. One of those isn't there, you don't graduate. So I want you to understand, the standard is there for this work. 132 of them have graduated. And our last four cohorts, as you can see, we're averaging 90, almost 91% graduation rate as we've gotten through this. We, we have 47 students currently working in life science that we know of. One of our biggest issues right now that we're trying to overcome with some advocacy roles and some unique internal work that we're doing. If you are, certifications are on the non-accredited side of the house, the non-degreed side of the house. So you have AS degrees here, and you have credits over here. So when you're on the credit side of the, when you're on the degreed side of the house, you're eligible, the university, the college, can track you. They can track where you now work and how much money you're making. That's how all your universities know this. If you're on the credited side of the house, there's no tracking. We have to rely on our student to tell us they got a job. Sometimes students don't tell us they got a job. Sometimes they tell us, you know, so it's, sometimes the, we push the alumni group to work with corporate to help us do that. But corporate has strict laws in terms of how they do it. So we're, we have a bit of an advocacy position that we're trying to work, figure out how to work through the state legislature to potentially change that with MyFutureNC. MyFutureNC understands that that's a big issue for us. We believe we have way more than them, that, that number, but we can't, and honestly, we can't report. We can only report legally what we know to be true from our students. I will say to you that it's, it's really ramped up in these last four cohorts. They were, since, just in the last couple of weeks, 14 more got jobs, you can see over here on the right-hand side. We also want to show you the demographics. Anyone 18 to 25 is eligible, but obviously with our community-based work here that we do in Durham, we end up, 60% are 18 to 21, 40% are 22 to 26. 22 to 26 is growing faster than 18 to 21. Pretty even, male, female. Started out heavily female. Males have caught up and are heavy male in the last several. Blacks, Hispanics, whites, AIPI, and other make up the total. But basically, what we'd like you to know is that 93.1% of the people participating in this program, graduating from this program, are young adults of color from Durham in this initiative.
Before you move on, I, I think many of you know that there has historically been an issue with underperformance in education and work of African-American men. So what we're seeing here recently with this growing success rate of men and significant numbers of African-American men is something that actually defies not only a North Carolina or Durham norm, a national norm. And that's critical. You don't see this kind of success and this kind of entry into high-wage work for African-American men. So something is happening here, and we're, we think we know what the elements are that are causing us to not just have individuals beat the odds, but to change the odds of success for African-American young people, and particularly African-American men. And that is, that's really, I think, among the most significant things that we see.
Yeah, we didn't want to drown you too much in data. We'll come back and do that later. But there is some incredible data out right now. We're having, we have, we have a company by the name of Economic Leadership doing an economic mobility analysis for us that will take us deep-dive look at economic mobility inside Durham. But there is also Raj Chetty data out, Insights Group data out that looks at economic mobility, not just in Durham, but by income, by age, gender, race, and by neighborhood. We can show you neighborhood by neighborhood who's progressing on the economic mobility scale and who is not. It's some really, really impactful data. But we, we do know that it's not this group. The ones that are doing well are not black males, are not Hispanic females, like you can see in this, this work that we're doing right now. So it is unique, and we will have that data, we will be laying that data across each other so you guys can look, take a look at what Durham's economic mobility rate actually is right now and where we want, need it to go with programs like this.
Casey, one other thing is just, I would point out for Commissioner's notice that the age group is significant because these are young people who either have or will soon have young families. So when the entire family becomes more economically stable, is earning middle-class incomes, and is on a progression path, this actually changes long-term prosperity for a group that has lagged. So think about all your other investments in early childhood and education. This is a strong contribution to intergenerational success.
Yeah, I would, I, again, in the interest of time, but the many, vast majority of the life science companies that these young adults get a job at have medical benefits, have childcare onsite, have cafeterias and food onsite. It is, it is absolutely life-changing for these students. We always get asked by Andy to bring a student to speak. I know you've seen some of the videos of our students. But unfortunately, they're all working during the day. So one of these nights, we would love to be able to bring them to a nighttime meeting, and you get to ask them questions and talk to them directly about how this has really changed their life. Another thing I just wanted to show, as we do here, as it gets, you talk about how we, how we do. Cohort 11, which we're recruiting for right now, already has 50 applications, and we haven't even started that program yet. The awareness is out there, people are really actively engaged. What I wanted to show is, I want to get back to the fact that this is not a program. This is how do we make Durham Tech and DPS better, right? I want you to look at this chart on the right-hand side here. This shows the BioWork graduations rates for Durham Tech in the overall program, and then pulled out by Bowles. And you can see in the 2022 year, we were both in the, they were in the 55, 53, 56% range, we're in the 45% range. In 2023, as we got going and scaling, this is when scaling started, thank you to the county, we are both in this mid-70 range. In 2024, when we're getting really good at this, we're both in the 93% range. So what are we doing, guys? We're making each other better. We're integrating this into the system of how you teach and engage students in this, in this program. Real quick, what's next for us? You heard us talk about all this economic mobility stuff, all these reports we are doing. One of the things we recently did was a landscape analysis where we talked to all of our community-based organizations, education institutions, and employers. And what we heard is Durham needs the North Star. What are we all working towards? What's that number? What's that goal? Where are we, where are we going on economic mobility? So we're doing the data analysis right now so that we can make sure that we are producing both that economic mobility for our young adults and also that robust pipeline, as David said earlier, for our employers. The initiatives that we're currently working on with, is still the Bowles program. We have cohorts for the fall and the spring. And then we will, our funding will run out. Okay, don't get me wrong, we're actively recruiting funding, but I just want you to know that the ARPA funding will then, we will have used it all up. We are also looking at engaging, re-engaging with DPS. We have not done that for a while under the new leadership at DPS and working with the DPS Foundation. We're hoping that in the coming year, we're also going to be able, and working with Durham Tech, Durham Tech is working very closely with DPS to create this program inside DPS. There's no reason juniors and seniors can't take this certification program while they're in high school and graduate with that certification already under their belt. No reason we can't do that. We're also looking at additional industry sectors. Right now, the RTI report says our number-one industry sector in the next five years is going to be clean energy. Well, that's what we believe. We don't know what the world is coming to currently. But if that is the case, we're trying to figure out what the certification might be for that. There is no single certification for that. Every industry has their own. And there is also development versus deployment. So we're working through all of those things right now. And we're really, really into, very focused on how do we track placement better? How do we get a system in place at the state level that allows us to track when our students are working and where they're working and how much money they're making here? And then obviously, sustainability funding is our biggest issue right now. We get funding from public sector, we get funding from philanthropic sector, and we get funding from corporate. And so we are looking at how we engage in that new funding model that allows us to really maintain our accountability role, guys. If you ask JB, you've had President Buxton today, ask him what the biggest contribution Made in Durham has made to DPS, he will say to you, accountability, accountability. We question everything. We ask, why is this number, this number, and not this number? Why is this going on and not this going on? We do that. And so it's really important for us. People like to fund the programs. It's harder to fund the sustainability role over here, this accountability role that we do as a systems organization. And we're also looking very strongly at demonstration funds for best practice, development, and integration. We really, we have a, we have a documentation work going on right now from a world expert, World Expert from Jobs for the Future, Jobs from the Future. And they are doing a documentation of the Bowles Initiative that will look at all of the process and pieces and give us an analysis on where we go from that. And I think with that, we are done, unless you wanted to add anything?
I got it. All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Burton.
Wow.
I know, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Well, I mean, no, it was great. And I really enjoyed our conversation on the phone the other week. So thank you for this great presentation. I'm going to limit my comments, try to get to the questions. But I wanted to know about this report that came out. Where can we find it? It's online?
Which one? The Raj Chetty?
Not the Raj Chetty.
Okay.
The one about the, I wrote it down, it's in here. It came out in 2012?
Oh, MDC report, yes.
Yes, MDC report.
We will get it too.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, we have it in the archives, no problem, we can get it.
I would love to read it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think the comment that I had, this is awesome because this is something that I ran on. How do we raise the level of economic mobility amongst our young people and our, you know, many of our residents in Durham? And I think you succinctly said, there are these two phases of Durham. You have this very, you know, educated workforce, well-paid, and then you have another subsection of Durham residents who don't really know all that's available to them. Because I saw it in the schools. So one of my questions is, with Bowles Academy, what are some of the challenges that some of the participants are facing with regards to, you know, access, you know, being a part of the program? Things like that? What are some of the challenges? How do we, one of the things that I see, I went to Career Day at my old school, how do we start this, like, say, in fifth grade? Because so many of our, you know, in the elementary level, at that foundational point, you know, we're teaching kids how to read, write, do math, but in, in fifth grade, you know, that's where it starts, right? About where, what do I want to do? How do we do that? And the third question will come to me, but those are the things I'm thinking about.
I'm, I'm going to answer the second one, and I'm going to ask my staff to come up and answer the first one because I want you to hear directly from them. On the DPS issue, DPS has gone through a lot of changes. So we have been very, just like staying collaborative with them. But I think at this point, they, with the new superintendent, they're very interested in, in dual, I keep saying dual enrollment, ladies and gentlemen. The new terminology is dual graduation, dual graduations. It's much more, I think, appealing to everyone. Dual graduation is much more, I think, appealing to everyone. They're very much focusing right now with Durham, the new superintendent is very much focusing with the president of the community college to figure out which of these programs we can get into Durham Public Schools, so that we would have, first and foremost, he's focusing on the high schools. Because even the high schools have very limited right now, over the last couple of years, they've limited their CTE activity. So what they're currently doing is working together to have every high school have a designated, this is an area of interest for us, right, moving forward? And this is where we want to go. So the two of them are working collaboratively together on the high school side. They also just CTE this last year to, just put in a brand-new CTE software product. So now students are actively engaging in creating their own career plan, right? That actually didn't, it didn't, it happened voluntarily, not required, and now it's required and moving forward on that. We are working with the Durham Public Schools Foundation and community-based organizations to understand how that works so we can help our students, help our students in doing that. I think, to your question, the most important thing we learned in this, sometimes it's not, sometimes, even though they're fifth graders, sometimes it's not the fifth grade, it's the community-based organization that they're somehow engaged in, involved with. They, our community-based organizations in Durham are plenty, and most of them have really deep trusted relationships, especially with young adults of color in this community, and they have been amazing engagers with us in this work. So while we have to do it at Durham Public Schools, I would say amplifying it with our community-based organizations is the way to get us in that. With that, I would like to introduce, guys, introduce yourself. You're better at doing that than I am.
Good morning. My name is Roxelle.
No, your bike's not on. Turn it on. There you go.
Good morning. My name is Roxelle Jones. I'm the Director of Community Engagement with Maiden Durham.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Therese Day, and I'm the Director of Youth Engagement.
And so we'll take some time to answer your questions, and I'll just add on to the fifth-grade exposure and some of the things that we've seen in the community as we do community engagement is really bringing awareness to the staff and the students that are in the school system. Our teachers and supporting staff are our biggest advocates, and so when you think about students in the fifth grade, opportunities where they're already experiencing some life science awareness and at Career Days and things like that, you really see how inspired the staff get by hearing what we do. And so just inspiring the staff alone, sometimes they're like, hey, why didn't we know about this program before we started teaching? But a lot of times, that, making that impact on them allows them to be able to share that awareness with students, and I think that really kind of helps support that longevity over time and bringing awareness to the opportunities in our community.
Yes, thank you, Roxelle. And when we think about some of the challenges that our students are facing, some of the things that come to mind are areas around tutoring, transportation, and childcare. And so one of the things that we've kind of done to get in front of that was supporting students with the content by making sure that they have access to tutoring biweekly, they have access to success coaches and their instructors daily, and those things have been put in place to support the students, and we have noticed a big difference with students being able to access the supports they need to do better. As it comes to transportation, we've noticed that students sometimes can't always get to a lab or can't get to a networking event, and so being able to provide that for students allows them to get in front of these companies before graduation and have the practice they need so that they will be prepared after the program. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss was childcare. Childcare, we have a lot of young women that come in asking for support, and so being able to provide them with drop-in centers in the area that will support the students on their journey has been super helpful, and we have noticed the difference in their attendance and courses and study sessions that happens in the evening so that they can attend those things have been supportive. Thank you.
And my last question was, and I would like to read that Raj Chetty report.
Mm-hmm.
Get that to us, that would be great. You said there were 200, 250 youth nonprofits.
We've identified in the landscape analysis 200 that are dedicated just to youth development-related activities. Because when I say 4,700, that includes Duke Health, UNC, UNC Health, that kind of thing. So we had to take a deep dive and take a look at that. And the only reason I tell you that is because we, a lot of times, fought that early on. Like, there has to be, how do we, how do we, how do we reduce the number and make, rather than spread it out, do it stronger in individual? And what we found out was that was really a bad assumption. Actually spreading it out and engaging our community-based organizations has been amazing. Wouldn't you say, Roxelle?
Absolutely.
Amazing helped us. So it's just, like they just said, it's getting them involved, getting them informed, giving them the capacity they need to do this kind of work, right? Because they're doing other work, but to do this kind of work to make sure that their students are getting the opportunity.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vauta?
Yes. So, thank you for your presentation, and so you did not oversell. The word that came to mind as I was listening to the presentation is transformative. And so thank you for the work that you are doing in our community, and so particularly at a time when you hear so much negative.
Yeah.
Particularly about our African-American men, our young men. The work you are doing is transformative, and so what I'd like to see is, or actually to know, is that the data that you're collecting, how does it show, how does it show the outcomes with respect to the increase in graduation rates? And so what accounts for that over time?
It's all the things you just, I think, heard Roxelle and Therese said. We think of, oh, childcare and tutoring and all that as just something normal. With this group, it's not. It's something not only that they need but don't normally have access to. So for us, it was, I think, a couple of things. I also think the incredible work Roxelle, Therese, and the team have done in the community to make the community aware of that. Now these students have support, not just from us, but from this community-based organization that calls them up and says, hey, John, how are you doing in the program today? Do you need any help? So it's creating a village. We've created, we've surrounded them, created a village, and I think really made it happen. We've got much better at helping them understand what the program is before they apply. They have an incredible selection process, very, very, a recruitment process for over months. How long do we recruit?
We recruit for about six to eight weeks.
Do recruiting, then they get them in and they do orient, they do some orientations, they do, they do, walk them through that process. I think this is important to understand because we didn't do that in the beginning.
Yes, so students are, so of course, we do our awareness. We share this opportunity with our community-based organizations when recruitment season is coming up, and so we pretty much do a mass shooting of marketing with them, as well as any other city online databases that we can share this opportunity with. We ask all students must attend an information session. We host three information sessions per recruitment cycle, and a student must attend an information session. We monitor their attendance by asking them to complete a survey at the end of the information session to ensure that they have listened and learned of the opportunities and the commitment that they're getting themselves into. Once they have submitted that verification, that we verify that they're a Durham County resident, that they're of age, we then invite them to apply. We follow that up with an application for them, and they have until the end of the application cycle to close. Once that is done, all the applications from those three information sessions, so our last information session, we had close to almost 100 students that attended over three information sessions. And so once they're invited to apply, all the applications are reviewed through the application committee, and we also share those names with Durham Tech, so they're able to verify that the students have any account balances on their account. So we do have multiple strategies where we make sure the student is fit for the program and that they're committed to the schedule, and then they're invited to attend a three-day orientation at Durham Tech, and it's mandatory and they can't miss any day. So we really try to make sure that they are committed to the process.
Casey?
The only thing I, go ahead.
Sorry, can I just add? Rashid, I'm the COO for Maiden Durham. One of the things I really want to highlight to answer your question, Commissioner, is really we are very much a learning organization. We're very iterative. So when we first started, this is not how we started, what Roxelle just described to you. When we first did our first cohort, it was a lot of learning, reflecting, and incorporating. So that's how our graduation rates definitely were able to rise, because the team has been very reflective in how, every single time we do a process, how can we make it better? What were some of the challenges? Getting feedback from the team, from the students, and so that was one of the ways we were able to help with our graduation rates, is just being very, very reflective and iterative, so.
So in the best interest of time, I would say that I'd like to stay in contact with you all to learn more about some data that I'm interested in, but it sounds like dollars well-spended.
Yes, we have lots of data, happy to share.
Commissioner Hager?
Yes, I just want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Andy recalls the, at least eight versions of ARPA proposals that we went through, all of us at our CFO, our interim CFO, myself and Andy, all who are very data-driven and knew on the backend much scrutiny would occur. We thank you for your commitment to excellence, the pedagogical changes from phase one to phase four. It means economic upward mobility is happening in a way that is transformative, and so, again, thank you, and we look forward to continued processes that can be modeled and not enough dollars, but you've set a model that will help our community for decades to come.
Thank you, thank you. Again, Claudia knows that I say it at every meeting all the time, we wouldn't be here without the county. You invested in us right from the very beginning, and you've been our partner from the very beginning. You should feel like this is your program because you've spent a lot of time and energy on it, same as we did.
All right. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to reach out to you all.
Yep.
And I do have some questions. I was on the Workforce Development Board when this was, when the committee was being created, Dr. Zal, I met with him many times and so forth, so I'm excited to see this go forward, but we really appreciate your presentation. Great information, and I'll be in touch.
Yes, and we'll make sure we get the reports.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is 250172. We will have presentations from Forward Cities and Knox Street Studios on small business support programming.
All right, Commissioners, while our presenters are coming up, I'll go ahead and get started. The next two updates related to ARPA funding that support Durham's small businesses. In September of 2023, Durham County issued a request for a proposal for small business support to create and maintain a comprehensive entrepreneurial ecosystem as well as provides targeted support for small businesses. The ecosystem model was incorporated because this was an emerging best practice that we saw encouraged by the Small Business Administration. Durham is rich in entrepreneurial support organizations, but there is a tremendous opportunity to better coordinate the provision of services amongst these organizations, and that is in part what we are trying to do with this award. So initially, an award of 1.5 million of ARPA funds was solicited for this purpose, and Forward Cities did receive that award, but we did have the benefit of having multiple high-quality applications that were received as part of that RFP process, and we did provide a second award of $750,000 to Knox Street Studios to provide additional direct services as well. So we have two presentations that we'll have consecutively. Each have been allotted 15 to 20 minutes, and first up will be Forward Cities, and we have Jacinta Walker and Magali Yasin will be getting us started today. So I hand it over to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Andy. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Magali Yasin, I am the Senior Director of Programs at Forward Cities, and I'd like to thank you all for having us here today and to provide an update on the project that you're supporting with some additional programmatic support by NCIDE. So E3 Durham, its goal is to strengthen Durham's small business ecosystem. Are we moving it? Sorry. Oh, sorry, I missed the tutorial. Right here? Thank you. Oh, okay. Before we jump into details of the program, we want to point to how we got here by sharing the roots of the program and history of our impact since we started back in 2022. So Forward Cities, we've been doing this work all around the country for some time, and it was really important for us to come back and be at the table with our community, our local community here in our own backyard, and take what we've learned around the country and bring it to the benefit of Durham and vice versa, so that we may have the ability to position Durham as a model for the country in this work. And that's been one of our primary goals throughout this time. On the screen, you see kind of our why, the why we do the work that we do and that we continue to do the work and why we're so passionate about this work that we do. Okay, so this journey began with a $1 million investment from the SBA that we were able to secure and bring into Durham, which made Durham the only city granted across the state. We aim to design a program for the region to help businesses start, grow, and scale in an equitable way. So what I want to do is first recognize the full team doing the E3 Durham work at Forward Cities and highlight our diversity, not only in race, but in skills and thought. I also want to point out the continuity of the team from the SBA version of this work and the current ARPA-funded enhanced version of the program. I want to particularly point out Jacinta Walker, who's here with me today, who's our E3 Durham Program Director, as well as Santiago Ramos and Latoya Austin, who serve as our business navigators in this work and really are in the community all day, every day, and they ensure smooth day-to-day of the program out in the community. So let's focus on what the program is today. All right. So today, we have a community-centered program that provide wraparound services and its core focus on one-on-one navigation for entrepreneurs and aligning them with partners and providers for better support. The center of the program is around this earning model where entrepreneurs could redeem credits for services. The program has two tracks, and the first track is the small business support, from everything from our Learn to Earn model, which is what I just mentioned, to cohort programs and expanded support for revenue growth. The second track is ecosystem development with the goals of collaboration, strategy, and creating a hub for our local ecosystem here. These two tracks are mutually reinforcing, and we'll dive a little deeper into these tracks in just a moment. Okay, so I want to hand it off to my colleague Jacinta, who will talk to you a little bit about the small business support.
All right. Good morning, and thank you so much for your time. So I want to talk about how we are meeting our entrepreneurs where they are, and that's one of the most important pieces, and how we're seeing success in our program. So we operate on our entrepreneur journey, and it's kind of like a five-point system, and our connection is what keeps it all together. And I just want to take you on that journey of what an entrepreneur would see. And so the first step is their dream, and so one of the things that we do is we are very intentional about how we do our outreach efforts. Again, we want to meet these entrepreneurs where they are, and so we go to seminars, we go to all types of expos, there's one coming up in May, and we will be there, we will be tabling, and we want to meet these entrepreneurs and find out what their dream is and find out what their vision is for their business. And this is how we're able to talk about the program, because as someone mentioned before, it's a lot of resources out there, but people don't really know what exists. And so that is how we make sure that they know programs like these exist. The second piece to this is explore, and so Magali mentioned our navigators. They're super, super important because that one-on-one connection is where we get our entrepreneurs to let us know what they're going through, what are their issues, why they feel that they're not moving forward, or what the things that they're doing well with. And this is how we're able to really explore the ecosystem. We have a very rich ecosystem of entrepreneur support organizations, and that is so important to tap into. And so the navigator will meet with them, and then they'll send them to the resources that they specifically need. One of my main jobs is to meet the ecosystem partners and to find out, everybody does, what, small business support, right? But what specifically do you offer that we can send our entrepreneurs to that will really resonate with them? And that has been one of the really nice pieces of support. We work with Durham Tech and folks like Echo and Infinity Bridges, those are some of our main partners, and we're able to really connect those pieces or connect the dots for our entrepreneurs. The third piece is learning, and this is what our entrepreneurs already do naturally, right? But one of the things is it gets a little bit daunting, and how much capacity do they have for the learning, and how can we really ensure that the learning is effective? And so the next one you'll see is how we kind of bridge that gap for our clients and our members by giving them some incentive. And so for the things that they're already doing, they can earn credits, and I love this system. It's our Learn to Earn system where, as they're going out and engaging, things like meeting with our navigator, seeing other counselors that we send them to. In addition to our Third Thursday, we have a monthly event. They can earn up to three credits just for coming there. I also invite you all to come. It's every Third Thursday, you can't forget it. It's at the Mutual Tower Building, and this is where they can have sessions and also really network with other entrepreneurs and ecosystem partners. So through this program and also cohorts, and so they are earning credits for everything that they're doing. Yes, it's up to the entrepreneur to really keep themselves going and be successful, but if we can help them and if we can continue to to lift them up and keep them going, that's what we want to do because we see more success that way. And so the earning packages are in three packages. They can have $300, $700, or redeem it for $1,000 worth of services. And it's up to $2,000 in business services free for the entrepreneur. And so the fifth step is now they can redeem those credits. And we have eight different categories, and across the eight different categories is over 50 different offers. And so we have a marketplace that they can literally go in and shop the service like they typically would anything else and find a service that works for them. Again, we ask that they meet with the navigator. So if the navigator's like, I think you may need some better software or some e-commerce, we have a marketplace that they can look into and redeem for those services. So it's an excellent system that has been working, and the entrepreneurs are super excited as well as seeing those packages and again, having these services that are free to them. And throughout this whole entire system, it's a connection piece. So one of the things that we are really seeing is that these peer-to-peer connections are really key. In addition to things like our networking events where we have all of the ecosystem partners come out, our entrepreneur support organizations, we are really seeing some valuable connections. People are making, finding clients there. They're getting the information that they need and the connections that are really helping them to move forward. Connection is a really big part of what we do. So we are so big on connection that we actually created a platform to ensure people can connect even further. So we love the in-person, and we again, want to meet the client and the entrepreneurs where they are. And so we created a E3 Durham Connects platform. It is literally free and open to everyone. To date, I think we launched it in November 15th, and to date, we have over 200 active members on the platform. It consists of our E3 Durham members, ecosystem partners, entrepreneurs that are not members, as well as other entrepreneur support organizations. They can share their events, share tips, tricks, all those type of things. Our ecosystem hub is also very important. We want to again, make sure the connection. So we're all about kind of breaking down these silos and making sure that we all work together. One of the things that we probably all know is that there's a lot of resources and a lot of duplication. And so in efforts to reduce that duplication and help entrepreneurs find the resources that they need, we have several things. I just spoke about the E3 Connects platform. In addition, we have a newsletter that goes out to thousands of folks each month on a bi-monthly basis. We have our bilingual navigator, Santiago, who is spearheading lots of great things, one of which is an ESO mixer, where he's been able to cultivate along with some other partners, 10 organizations that are of Spanish-speaking and continue to do that work, especially in this climate that we're in. And that's the translation services. We have a free business directory. We did lives on our platform every Friday where we put the service providers in front of the entrepreneurs so they could get acquainted, and additional ESO mixers that we'll have on a quarterly basis. So again, we get to know these ecosystem partners for who they are and what they offer so we can do really meaningful connections with our entrepreneurs. Cohorts and accelerators are one of the ways that we've heard directly from our clients that they are really interested in. The days of, yes, we want to be virtual, but there's a real want to be together and to kind of grow together. We just recently had our March Cohort graduates for our Developing Your Million Dollar Idea cohort. That's our graduation picture there. We held it in our E3 Durham Center over at Mutual Tower. And excited to say that we are getting close to choosing our seven participants for our Levtech Accelerator. This is in partnership with Knox Street Studios, Launch Path, and Providence 1898. Again, it's seven spots. We had over 50 applications. And so we know the work that we're doing is something that our clients, our entrepreneurs, our members really need. And this is also funded by NCIDEA. Technical assistance and connections, there again, getting the actual resources to the entrepreneurs and getting the things that they need done. So again, we start, we always say, meet with your navigator. We drill that into our entrepreneurs because we really want to get the specific resources that entrepreneurs need. From there, they can get that one-on-one counseling. We have it in-house, or we send them again to our ecosystem partners who can handle it. And we are always doing warm leads. If you're in business or anything, you know, a warm handoff or introduction or some edification really makes a difference, and it helps you to move forward faster. Again, we are providing workshops and trainings. This is curated based off of our data. And so we know money and marketing is always number one, but also from our data, we found that artificial intelligence is now number three. And so we create workshops for that. And we're also really involved with our national, regional partners. And our strategic partnership again with Knox Street Studios, we have literally bi-weekly meetings. We cross-promote to make sure both of our programs are really being amplified. Entrepreneur referrals and cohort, again, they will be instructing our Levtech Accelerator coming up. And so really by the numbers, I'm super excited to just share so many amazing things. From left to right, we have 35% increase in LinkedIn, 12, over 12,000 in our e-newsletter. And so one of the things I want to say is shout out to our marketing department and Atisha. When we put things out, people really respond, and we see that. We have over 153 hours of navigation and counseling in-house, over 240 active clients. And our database is well over 600 because we did have a database with this SBA program, but we want to count the ones that are active, and so that's that number there. We just graduated our 16 folks for our cohort program, 18 workshop hours, that's just in our monthly event. And of course, we do have more cohort programs coming, 400 plus in our event attendance, and to date, almost 670 Learn to Earn credits have been earned from our members. And so super proud, super excited about these numbers. And I also want to mention, this is year to date, but we just really launched it to the clients in August. And so these numbers are just about July. So these numbers are about nine months' worth of just really exciting work. And so with that, I want to turn that back over to Magali to kind of close it out.
Thank you so much for that overview of our entrepreneurial track, Jacinta. Now let's look at how we're working with the ecosystem to link and leverage the insights and resources from that track. There we go. Okay, so in order to accomplish our ecosystem development, we have convened a Durham E3 Alliance. On the screen, you'll see the organizations that were involved in year one. The alliance members essentially serve as champions for the local ecosystem. So during our monthly convenings, we're able to build relationships while also working to identify and map strengths and gaps in our ecosystem so that we can better co-develop a strategic plan, which we already have a form of a draft for year two, I'm happy to say. All right. On a parallel track to our entrepreneurial track, we have an ecosystem development system here. So this process that you see here, we are following over these two years to work on ecosystem development. In year one, we focused on assessing the ecosystem, mapping the assets, connecting for better alignment. And as we move into year two, our focus becomes action and amplification. So we are going to be taking the strategic plan that we've drafted, that we've created based on the information that have emerged to begin to build the capacity of the ecosystem to better serve entrepreneurs. And that draft that we have so far, it involved input from our alliance members as well as our last Third Thursday. We actually held it as a town hall so that we can get input from the entrepreneurs in the community as well. So it is full-inclusive of the communities to make sure that we're going the right path forward. So we're taking some action and doing some projects over year two to ensure that we're able to really pour into our community. And then we're going to tell the stories along the way of how we are doing that work. We'll also continue to convene and connect ecosystem partners throughout the entire time. So we're really excited about that. All right. So as now, as you all know, sadly, we'll be wrapping the work at the end of year two in March of 2026, maybe. All of that will come together in this final strategic report. And what that report is designed to do and achieve is provide the blueprint for sustaining and expanding support for a program like this in Durham and hopefully even across the country. This will be developed with the participation of the entrepreneurial ecosystem partners, creating a long-term strategy through 2030 in our community. So we'll be making recommendations as it applied to policy, funding, leadership, and programming to be sure that we can sustain ecosystem gains, building a budget framework that we can help, that can help guide decisions specifically beyond this ARPA funding period. Okay, so here's the vision for what this is ultimately leading to, and if you don't mind, I'm going to read this verbatim. "Our innovative small business ecosystem will position Durham as a city where entrepreneurs come to thrive, becoming an aspirational small business development model for communities around the country." So this is our vision. We trust that you support this vision and that you'll continue to be a partner along the way. But hopefully, my next slide worked well, and I have someone who I believe can tell you better than I can as to why we believe in this. Nope, didn't work. I don't know how to do it. Nope. Okay, well, you all have it in your, because we sent you a lengthier presentation than what we presented today. You all have it in your presentation, and you hear directly from one of our entrepreneurs and the impact of E3 Durham and their business. Thank you so much, and I'll pass it along to our partners unless you want to ask us questions first. Not sure how this is going.
We'll let you, let your partners speak, and then we'll ask questions after that.
Good morning, everyone. Ms. Hager, Ms. Williamson, and Commissioners. My name is Lee Gray. I'm the Associate Director for Knox Street Studios, and I'm happy to be here today to talk about the work that we are doing in the community and underneath the Durham County GRAN, ARPA grant. Before we dig in, I'd like to give Jessica Everhart the opportunity to speak today. She is an inaugural board member for Knox Street Studios. She's also a small business owner. She is one of the original founders for Black Wall Street Homecoming, past Executive Director for Leadership Triangle. It goes on and on. So I would like to give Jess the opportunity.
Thanks, Lee, and good morning, everyone. We're still in the morning. I'm excited to be here. Glad I have just two minutes to sort of set this up as I think about Knox Street Studios. Knox Street Studios is led by Taleb Gravesmans, who's not with us today. He's in San Diego at a conference. But when I was talking to Taleb and Lee and the team about today's presentation, one of the things that keeps bubbling up and is the sort of the impetus for why I'm connected to this work is the history. Knox Street Studios is built on legacy. Go ahead. Well, actually, go back. I want to say exactly who this is as it's important. That's George Wall. George Wall, when he was born in 1871, was enslaved at that time, 1861, was enslaved at that time, and was bonded to the president of Trinity College about 19 years later. When that happened, he didn't realize it then, but was on a trajectory, a trajectory to make an impact at Duke University and an impact to make a lasting impression on his family and us here today in this room. Go ahead, next slide. The, he had 14 children, and this gentleman on the left is Mr. Wall III. And he was instrumental. He was instrumental in Wall Street. So, Wall Street, y'all. Let's get this together. Walltown, Black Wall Street, okay. Frank Wall was instrumental in creating the legacy for Knox Street Studio because while his father was a janitor and a custodian at Duke University, he took over that legacy and continued to become that space. But he led in this way by, when in his will, he gave a $50 entrustment, a scholarship, which was the first time that it ever happened by a black man, prior to Duke University ever allowing admittance for black students. So with that sort of like encapsulating leadership, Taleb, who is the great, great, great grandson of Frank Wall, took that spirit and built it into his work that you see today. I got connected to Taleb about, I don't know, eight to 10 years ago when he was the entrepreneur in residence at American Underground. And I was really impressed by his commitment to Durham, to the city of Durham and to the community of Durham. And I didn't really understand the choices that Taleb was able to make. Like, he has a master's degree, and he could do things anywhere in the country. But what Taleb did decide to do was to apply and be rooted here in Durham. He came back to the city of Durham where he knew his history was rooted, where it was more than just a notion to see entrepreneurship flourish. And he decided to purchase a property on Knox Street. He did that in service of his great, great, great grandfather. He did that in service of knowing that the namesake where he lived and where he was going to build his business and his nonprofit investment would be Knox Street Studios in Walltown. So the real history there is linked for generations to come. And I was a little nervous in sort of introducing this because when you're talking about somebody's legacy, you want to get it right, and you want to get all the statistics right. But at the end of the day, this is history come to life. And so when they asked me to sort of, as a representation of the board, being on the Board of Directors, to sort of lay that out, it was really important for me to connect the dots between what you're going to hear today and the work that's happening here with Forward Cities and the work that's happening here at Knox Street, and the investment that you all made, the continuing investment in the ARPA funds, because it is generational. It is connected generationally. There is this legacy of the past, right, honoring the past and really understanding the commitment to the future. And so I just wanted to say all of that, and thank you, thank you, Lee, for inviting me to come. It's been a pleasure really to serve on the board many years ago for Knox Street Studios, and I've had the opportunity gratefully to meet so many of the students that have come through the programs through facilitating, et cetera. So thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Jess. That was a really great introduction. So forgive me, I might be a little nervous running through some of this. We, you know, in this work, we've been keeping our heads down and doing the work, and then we look up, and we are in this magnificent space presenting to the Board of Commissioners. So Knox Street Studios was founded in 2017, and we focus on three things: information sharing, teaching, and apprenticeship. And we call ourselves a studio so that we can stay nimble to the needs of the community in this rapidly changing environment. Before I dig in, I want to take a moment to thank all of you, our partners here at Durham County, as well as our various partners in community, because none of these things that we're about to talk about today would be possible without your support. So we think about our work in two primary focus areas. The first area is small business and economic mobility, and those house our Startup Weekends, Accelerators, and Incubators. And then the second bucket is workforce development, where our certifications program and tech skills workshops live. Before we move on, I want to just share a little bit about the why we do this work. This is personal for me. I am a Durham resident. I love this city. I have a four-year-old daughter. Every Friday, we have movie night. Before we have movie night, we live in Woodcroft, we walk down to Chubby's Tacos. We have tacos and chips and cheese. And then we walk home, and we have movie night. We just found out that there is a Chipotle that popped up, you know, less than a quarter of a mile away. No shade to Chipotle, we love them, but just as this landscape is changing so rapidly here in Durham, we have to be intentional about making sure that our workforce and our Durham small businesses are able to keep up with that growth. So that's why we're doing this work. So we think about small business and economic mobility as a funnel, and people come in with an idea. Maybe they start at our Startup Weekends. But as they grow, they need different levels of support. So the idea here is that we have a program to support every stage of business, and ultimately, they come out of the bottom of the funnel as a sustainable, profitable company. But in the event that they don't, we stay connected with our partners like Forward Cities. I think you guys are getting the vibe here that it's more of a soup in the entrepreneurial support world. So we're connected to Forward Cities, Echo, Infinity Bridges, the Small Business Centers, so that if we can't provide the support that they need, we have someone in the ecosystem who can. On the workforce development side, when we pick up the business triangle, or the business triangle, or Triangle Business Journal, we see XYZ Company is coming here, right, and it's bringing 10,000 jobs, and we're all excited about that because the assumption is that all of those jobs are going to go to is that all of those jobs are going to go to Durham residents. But I don't think that that's actually really what's happening. So XYZ Company brings 10,000 jobs, they're also importing workforce, and they're doing that because they need people with the right skill sets. So we've developed a program to address that gap. So this side is for entrepreneurs, and this side is for upskillers. And our ultimate goal is simply to make sure that all Durham residents have a pathway to keep up with the growth that's happening here. We'll spend the next few minutes talking about the work we're doing on the economic mobility side. But before we dig in, nothing makes a great story, and nothing makes an impact like a great story. So we have a resident, he's a Knox Street Studios alumni here with us today. His name is Rich Gilliam. And Rich is an EdTech founder. He is a TEDx speaker. He is also the RTP Chapter President for the National Society for Black Entrepreneur, Black Engineers, excuse me. And I'll pass it off to Rich.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for that introduction. First, you know, I don't know where to start with Knox Street Studios Startup Weekend. Um, you know, I did the program about a year, going almost a year ago, and it was such an amazing weekend. You know, when I first came in, you know, I already came in, uh, you know, I'm actually a children's author, so I have a book called Diversed in STEM. So that was my first children's book, really helping kids get into STEM. But coming into the weekend, you know, I really wanted to validate more ideas, grow confidence as an entrepreneur, and Knox Street did everything and more for me. You know, starting from, I remember we did customer discovery in the city of Durham, which really helped me validate and get comfortable as an entrepreneur, as well as just the way that, you know, Knox Street continued to just seed into me after the weekend was even over, connecting me to other ecosystems within Durham, such as E3. Just amazing things that they really kind of installed into me. And one of the biggest things that I will say from Knox Street that just really kind of stands out to me still to this day, uh, like I said, is just going back into really installing confidence into their entrepreneurs, you know? Not just myself, I know everyone else that was a part of that weekend that I kind of participated in. Everyone came out with a sense of confidence, they had a sense of wanting to continue to now work on their ideas and validate those ideas. So just from that weekend, you know, I really got comfortable with doing, I would say, customer discovery. And after that weekend, I went into an in-depth, maybe six months of customer discovery with different local teachers in North Carolina and South Carolina. And that actually led to me actually creating, uh, my latest product that just came out is called the Hydrobot Robot, which is a toy robot that kids can build. Uh, so I have to give all that credit to Knox Street Studios of really just helping me get comfortable of validating my ideas and just being comfortable as being an entrepreneur. So, no, I want to leave it at two minutes, so.
Thank you so much, Rich. We're really proud of you and excited to, to see where you'll go with us.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, so digging back in, Rich just started talk, or Rich shared with us Startup Weekend, and I mentioned that Startup Weekend is at the top of our funnel. So it is the most forward-facing way that people come into our programs, and it is a high-energy crash course on how to start a business. It's also catalytic networking and community building. We do workshops on customer discovery, and then participants go out downtown Durham and actually do customer discovery. Same thing with marketing, developing your pitch, developing your prototype. All of those things are being done in real time, so people are walking away with tangible output from the weekend. We bring in subject matter experts to come and mentor, as well as Startup Weekend alumni who can speak to the experience and help, help move the needle. It's drinking from a fire hydrant all weekend long. It's 54 hours over a weekend. And what, what it usually takes founders six months to do on their own at this stage, they're getting done in 54 hours. We're not able to play a video today, I'm pretty sure. Um, and so it is uploaded in OneDrive, so please check it out, because it really demonstrates the magic and brings the weekend to life. Our next stop on the funnel is our Launch Lab Accelerator, and this is a 15-week early-stage accelerator that we are nine weeks into our first cohort of. The second cohort will launch in the fall. And we're doing this in partnership with NC Idea and American Underground. It is a deep dive of Startup Weekend. Our pitch day is on May 7th. We'd love to see you all there, uh, and it's going to be at American Underground. I will make sure that we upload the invitation onto OneDrive. This cohort, we have a really diverse group of founders leaning in. We're very excited about one particular, who is a UNC Research Scientist, who's developing a home recycling prototype. He's really smart, but he's learning how to navigate the startup space. And so we see a lot of that intellectual property coming out of the university system, and how do we translate that into tangible businesses or services in our community? So we're excited to have him in our cohort. He just finished his website using tools that he learned in the Launch Lab Accelerator. We believe at Knox Street Studios, no coaching without capital. We are over-coached as a people in this space, and so we are super excited to announce that because of a partnership with NC Idea, we're able to offer both of our cohorts $1,200 stipends at the end of the program. And that goes a long way. The last stop on our funnel is the Support to Scale Incubator. And we have two planned for the county. We have applications open right now, and we are set to kick this one off at the end of April. So we all know that during COVID, the startup culture blossomed. And what we're seeing now, five years later, is that those successful businesses are now in the growth stage, and there is a gap in support. We still have a lot of early-stage business support, less support for the growth stage. So we offer specialized tracks in commercial real estate and venture capital. So for the real estate track, we notice if we look downtown, there are no big-box retailers, right, which I love. I think it's, it protects the unique charm of this city. But if I'm a small mom and pop, and I have a shop downtown, and we are expecting 50,000 residents over the course of the next five years, then the only way that I can stay in this market, as real estate costs increase, is if I own the building. So we designed that track with this in mind. Our second track is the Venture, Venture Capital Track. So we're in partnership with a Venture Capital Track to deliver this curriculum. Participants are going to get one-on-one coaching from real fund managers with the opportunity to be venture capital-backed at the end of the program. Another big shout-out to NC Idea here on this, because we are able to offer $5,000 grants upon completion of this program to offset the hard costs that are associated with real estate acquisition and venture capital. So we talked about small business and economic mobility. Let's dive into workforce development and how we're sparking the community there. We know, like you know, not everyone wants to lift a business up from the ground. It's a lot of work, right? But technology is changing at a really rapid rate, and a lot of people just don't have the time or the resources to keep up with those changes. So we've designed two programs that take a practical approach to workforce development. Before we dig into this, it's one thing to tell you about it, but it's another thing to bring it to life in person. So you heard from Rich, and now I'd like to stop talking for a second and turn the mic over to Sabrina. Sabrina's a multi-startup founder. She's a military veteran, and she's also a climate justice advocate.
Good afternoon, everybody. Glory to God. I can't say enough about Knox Street. I have two certificates with them. One is a cybersecurity certificate, the other one is a digital marketing certificate. This is amazing. It helped transform my business from people telling me, no, it cannot work, to, no, it can work. You know, the science is there. And I just love that backbone support that they have given me, and also led to me having big-name companies come, come to me, such as Nvidia, Meta from Facebook, testing out these, these new AI tools that's coming out to the different communities and different small businesses around here. And with Knox Street, having me take the cybersecurity course definitely opened up my eyes more to being a small business owner, to helping other people to create their small business and help them grow as well. And I also have another business that's ran by Solar, so basically it's hydro solar. Knox Street has been a backbone to me with that, because I've been told no so many times. But they have been a backbone and a skeleton, and also have been the veins that make me, to help me network in different areas that I never thought I would be in. So I, I am grateful, and I would like to Knox Street and E Street, E3, thank you as well, because without them, I don't know where I would be.
Thank you. Thanks, Sabrina. We're really proud of you as well. And so in this work, we really look forward to supporting many more participants and people in community like Rich and Sabrina. So let's talk about our Google Career Certificates. Here, participants get hands-on experience while earning industry-recognized credentials that employers are looking for. If we look at median salary ranges for cybersecurity, within the first five years, the median salary is $115,000. $95,000 within the first five years for data analytics. $71,000 for digital marketing. So these are people who have an opportunity to gain these skill sets and this industry-recognized credential and immediately go into these positions. In spite of that, in spite of the value that we see here, and that they are an avenue for career transitions, research suggests there's a really high attrition rate for people trying to complete these certifications on their own. And so we saw a need for a cohort-based model that's really been transformative. We provide the seats, which is a $250 cost savings to the participants, and what would have, what Google suggests that it would take four to six months to complete, in this cohort-based model, we put them through in 10 weeks. We're focusing on data analytics, AI essentials, and prompt engineering, cybersecurity, and digital marketing. I know it's a lot. Hang in there. I have two more programs I want to show with you, and then, and then I'm going to land this plane. So Tech Skills Workshops. We're doing six of these for the county. We've done two. These are expert-led standalone events that give us an opportunity to bring, to bring community together. And our big goal here is to break down the barriers between the big guys and the little guys, get them in the same room for impact. I want to highlight, one of the Tech Skills Workshops that we did was called Build Where the Billions Are. And that was an event bringing together CDFI leaders from across the country to talk about funding from the EPA and the Greenhouse Reduction Act. The library have been great partners for us. Commissioner Burton, you know, Sarah Stevens is over at the library. She's the Development Officer there. She's also our new Rotary President, which we're really excited about. Anything that we have asked of the library, they've just been supportive and champions for us. So we're grateful for Durham County for that. And finally, Next Level Launch. This is a program that is on the horizon. We, we are still looking for partners, but we do see a need in Durham. KC with Made in Durham did a really good job at summarizing this with the Disconnected Youth Report, that 3,600 youth that are ages 16 to 24, that's 12% of our Durham youth, who are not in school or not working, right? So we saw this need for this program. And our aim is to give young adults ages 18 to 24, in a gap year, transitional period, an option between two tracks. The first track is a pathway to higher education, where they'll explore educational opportunities. We help them navigate financial aid and take academic readiness, except readiness assessments. And then the second pathway is workforce development, where they will explore career pathways, gain industry-recognized credentials, and have some apprenticeship opportunities. How are we feeling? I know that was a lot. Thank you, Commissioner Burton. So over the last 15 minutes, I've laid out a lot for you all. It's a lot to take in. That's how our team feels every day. But there's a lot to do, because this impact is undeniable. And at this point, you might be curious about who's coming into our program, so let me give you a quick demographic snapshot of who we serve. This is extrapolated data specifically from our Google certification program. Thanks to the county grant, we have been able to level up on our data and reporting, and so our part, our data and reporting partners wanted to give us this so that we could share it with you all today. As we get more and more of this data, we will definitely incorporate it in our future presentations and share that with you all as well. So, looking at these pie charts, 90% of our participants are over the age of 35, and 50% of those participants are over the age of 50. 90% identify as black, 50% identify as women, and 20% identify as low to moderate income. These are business owners. They're stay-at-home mom or dads. They're career shifters. They're people who can't afford to retire yet but need to upskill to stay relevant. They're building companies, and they're energizing the workforce here in Durham. Looking at the bigger pies, 80% of our participants are entrepreneurs, and 84% of those folks are in our AI programs. These are small business owners who are using AI to improve their efficiency and scale. AI is not going to take our jobs. It is a growth tool. It's not a job threat. It's lowering traditional barriers to tech-based entrepreneurship. Think app development, think automation, think digital business. And so looking conservatively, in terms of small business revenue growth, if just 84% of our participants for, here, let me go back to this Google Career Certificate. So when we talked, when we talk about the work that we're doing under the county, we are putting, usually we talk about it in a cohort model, but for the purposes of the grant, we are putting 30 people through the Google Career Certificate program. So if 84% of our participants, that's 25 people, those who are businesses, business owners, grow their annual revenue by $10,000 due to AI adoption, we're going to see a big increase in economic activity across two cohorts. That's money staying in Durham, circulating locally. Now, as we expect, we expect that as these businesses grow, they're going to need more help. So this makes for some interesting predictions for impact for 2025. So we've already talked about numbers one and two, and again, I want to reiterate, we're being conservative. I want to talk about three areas I want to highlight, because it's a great way to end. We're fueling the economy with local hires, a reduction in human services, and contributing to tax revenue. So we talked about one and two. Let's jump to the third line, and I want to read this, because it's important to get it right. If just 20 to 25% of business owners in our programming hire one new part-time or full-time staff person, that results in 10 to 12 new jobs in Durham. Let's talk about public support savings. Currently, around 7% of our program participants identify as unemployed. We set a goal of moving two people off of SNAP this year, off of public assistance this year. So if two participants transition into full-time employment, the county is going to see an annual public benefit savings of about $7,700 if we combine SNAP and Medicaid. That would put nearly $16,000 back into the county budget with just two people becoming full-time. Lastly, let's talk about tax revenue increase. This is based, again, on the AI certification program, but we envision that this tax revenue increase will be exponentially larger as we look at our other, as we look across our other programs. What we know is that 84% of our certificate participants are business owners. If each sees a $10,000 increase in revenue, that's about $260,000 per cohort, or $520,000 across two cohorts. If they're solopreneurs and they have passed through taxes, then income will be affected. And so income tax on that at four and a half percent is going to be about $23,000. And if 25% of that revenue is product-based, because they have a consumer goods business, sales tax on that is 7.5% and $10,000. So, and this is all in the slide deck. I know I'm spitting out a lot of numbers, and it's not my first language either, so happy to revisit this at a later time. But if their business growth is projected to create 10 to 12 new part-time jobs across both cohorts, generating roughly $180,000 in wages and $18,000 in payroll and wage taxes. So if we add up income tax, sales tax, and wage tax, that's about $50,000. So if we add up income tax, sales tax, and wage tax, that's about $50,000 in tax revenue for 2025. This is our projected impact for the Google Certifications Program. As you can see, our work isn't just about economic mobility and growth. It's about reaching people who have been left out of traditional pathways, and it's important work, but I don't do it alone. Here's the rest of the team. They're frolicking, frolicking in San Diego right now. They say they're at an educational conference. But if you have any questions, we are all only an email away. I spoke a lot today about the work we do and the people we serve. For every one person we can accept into our program, there are two people that we can't because we don't have the resources. But we do have the demand, we have the capacity, and we're ready to grow. So we will quietly and gently keep banging the drum for any dollars that may turn into pumpkins at midnight. On a serious note, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you for supporting us, for trusting us to be good stewards of this work and these dollars. And I often say that I don't, I don't come from the nonprofit space, and so I often say that this work is under-resourced and scrappy, and it is, but it is very joyful and very rewarding to have people like the county by our side. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lee. This was really good information, and hopefully, again, we can come out and see what you all do, like get a visitor to learn more because I'm very interested in helping develop these small businesses. I will make it really brief. My grandparents owned a very successful two barber shops, and they owned them for over 30 years. And I'm beginning to think, you know, this was during segregation, if they had the support and resources, man, what they could have done. So thank you for doing this work. Two questions. It seems like one of the things that you all are doing is to help people build their social capital, right? And then also, what are some of the businesses, small businesses are coming to you all for support? I'm interested in knowing that.
So social capital is really important. You heard me use the word connection about a billion times. And this is also what we're hearing from the entrepreneurs. So that's where we have the E3 Durham Connects platform where they can connect directly. Again, one of the things we heard from them was virtual is great, but they love to, to be in community with one another. And so we are seeing those connections. Our main database of folks are startups, and so we have a lot of creatives. So people that are creating, you know, lotions and butters and soaps and things like that, so creatives. We also have a majority of, so B2B, and so those that are in, you know, helping with finance, or they may do bookkeeping, marketing, just areas like that. One of the biggest issues that we're seeing with these startups is they don't necessarily know how to explain what it is that they do. And so we're at the basics of just describing, you know, having a basic plan. And we have a tool, a free tool for that, for them to create an AI plan and for them to be able to discover what their MVP is. And so just trying to catch them as they're coming in with that excitement to help them to grow. In addition, we do have a few brick and mortar and some bars of folks that have been in other programs throughout the community where they can set up pop-up shops and things like that. So I would say more service-based than product-based. Do you want to chime in?
I think I'll just address the second part of the question. I think it was, what are they coming for? Like what their biggest needs are? I think what we've seen a lot of is the basic foundations, even for businesses that have been in existence for quite some time. It may even, you know, make a lot of money. Their cash flow models are not where it needs to be. Their financials are not set up correctly. So just providing, connecting them to the right provider to make sure that they can build a sustainable business has been kind of the number one thing for a lot of the businesses in the program. And then also, a lot of the businesses, kind of like you're saying with social capital, but it's really, they don't know how to let people know about them. So one of the, I think, one of the things we've heard has been, one of the biggest benefits of E3 Durham is that we're able to amplify those businesses, make sure that the community know about them, make sure they know about each other, because that's one of the hardest things for them to do is promote themselves. So having a vehicle like this be able to promote them. So a lot of them come to us just to amplify them as well.
I can speak to that from, through a Knox Street lens. So many of our participants, people coming through our program, they are ed tech founders. We have some in consumer goods, very indexed in professional services, accounting. We have a lot of creatives coming through that don't know how to speak the business language. They have all of the information, and so we help shape that. And wellness professionals. We have, we have a lot of wellness professionals, a lot of breathwork and meditation folks, stress reduction in corporate. And then in terms of social capital, we try to maintain our alumni platforms and so that there is this, and every so often, we'll, you know, drop something in that chat so that we can spark conversation among them, and those platforms continue to grow. I'd say our, our most active and largest platform is Startup Weekend, the Startup Weekend Alumni. Did that answer your question?
Definitely, because I know that's something that a lot of business startups, small business startups, particularly with, you know, people of color, marginalized groups have struggles with. So it's good that you all are helping with that. And like I said, I know we're, you know, for time, but I would like to talk more about what you all do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes. So thank you for your, your presentation this afternoon.
I tried to get y'all out for lunch. I'm sorry.
One of the speakers had noted that Durham is a great community for entrepreneurs and small businesses. I think I join you in that sentiment. And I think that all of us here on the dais can appreciate the value that small businesses and entrepreneurs bring to the local, to the local economy. So thank you for the work that you do in ensuring that they have all the resources that they need to be successful. And that's important to us. I also want to shine a light on the history that was provided here today about George Wall and the Waltham community, which is in transformation. And it's important for our community not to forget this history and the Wall family's contribution to the development of Black Wall Street. And so I'm very thankful and grateful for you highlighting that today, not only for members of the board, but also our larger community. And so that's not lost on me. And so I'll end my statement today by quoting a famous author, Sabrina Crunk. This is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so thank you all for the presentation today. This is extremely powerful and important information to have. I've tried my hand at entrepreneurship and even did the NCI Dia Grant, and I wish I'd have known about these programs, or I wish they were around when I was there. It may have been different. I may be on a beach somewhere instead of at this dais. Right. But I look forward to, I'm going to really try to come to one of the startup weekends. I've known about them for a little while. I definitely want to observe, learn, and participate as much as I can because I do think we can re-roll the spirit of this Black Wall Street here in Durham by supporting these types of programs and building right here. We have everything we need right here within our county borders, and I look forward to doing that. It's a very important part of my heart, especially technology and these certifications. It's something that I mentor people to seek, you know? You don't have to have a college degree to get a certification. You don't have to have a solid, a college degree to work at these big-time companies. It may help, but you don't have to have a college degree to have that, but the certifications help more at this period of time. I know kids in school who've done these programs and go right out of school working for Apple and Amazon and Google and all of those sources, and even these other companies with certifications. So I really look forward to helping you all grow the capacity that you all have for these programs, but for certifications as well. That's an important part of my advocacy, and I look forward to doing that a little bit. So thank you all very much for this. Manager Hager?
I just want to say thank you for your commitment to the community and how you're inspired and sometimes give that encouragement needed to go further, but more importantly, tactically point folks in the right direction. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Thank you. What we're going to do is we're going to, I think we're going to do a work-in lunch. We do have lunch out there. I want everyone to look at your watches. Okay? It is 12:06 by my count. 12:20, we're going to be starting again. All right? This is a work-in lunch. You get your food and come back in here. Huh? Oh, use the bathroom too. You can, you can do that. All right. I said 12:26, but, yeah. Did I say 12? Oh, 12:26. Hey, hey, we're going to keep, no, now, let's just, okay, it is, it's 12:07. Let's do 12:30. Right at 12:30, we will start and make it easier that way. 12:30. All right? Is everybody looking at your watch? Everybody see it? All right. 12:30. 12:30. We are back in session. It is 12:30 as promised. And so, Manager Hager, we will continue on with our discussion agenda.
Good afternoon and we are delighted to have a conversation this afternoon on the Durham to Roxborough rail trail plan and get an update on preliminary findings. And I will kick it off to Ellen Beckman who is helping to facilitate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Ellen Beckman, Transportation Director for Durham County. So, I want to introduce the project team that we have here today. First of all, on the far left is Brooke Roper, who's a transportation planner for Durham County. She's been here about six months. Prior to this was with the City-City Planning Department. And I just want to commend her for jumping right in on this project and doing a lot of public engagement. Some of y'all witnessed that. So, she's doing a great job here for the county. Also, Andrew Meeker from the East Coast Greenway Alliance, who's a nonprofit that is coordinating with us on this plan. And the presenter, Eric Woolridge, the President of Destination by Design, who's our prime consultant for the project. And so, with that, we have a lengthy presentation. I will turn it over to Eric to go through it and then we'll have opportunity for questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good afternoon. We do have quite a few slides. I will say that, you know, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on every single one of these slides, but wanted to provide the board with sufficient information to provide a great update. And, you know, some of the slides I'll go over relatively quickly. I do wanted to stop and thank Brooke and Ellen for their leadership. It's been great to be working for the county and the city. And you all have a tremendous staff here. Let's see, this thing will go. Thank you so much. So, for the last six-plus months, our team along with staff and a number of partners have been working to kind of unpack the rail trail corridor. As I think most of you all know, from downtown Durham to Roxborough is approximately 26 miles in length. The 18 miles that are within the Durham County portion is the study area that's part of this particular planning study. Tremendous amount of historical significance along this particular corridor. I don't, I'm not gonna get into the details of a ton of that, but I will say since 19, or since 2006, it's pretty impressive that the county's had capital improvement program in place that's prioritized this corridor. That's pretty rare, I'll say, for the work that we do, that there's been that much forethought put into this. But the ultimate goal here is to transition this entire former rail corridor into a multipurpose bike way. From a project timeline standpoint, we've done a tremendous amount of analysis, public engagement. I'm gonna get into the details of and results of that work here shortly. We're now moving into this kind of draft plan development and we're gonna do another round of public engagement as well. So, very opportune time to present to you all, obtain any feedback, answer any questions and so forth. But the ultimate goal is by October that we'll have a final plan for review. Tremendous project management team and partners involved in the project, of course, the county and the city, East Coast Greenway, Triangle West and NC DOT. So, this has been our primary liaison. We've been meeting, have been meetings every two weeks for the last six months in addition to all the public engagement and meetings as well. Don't wanna get into the details and read here on this slide, but did want to put it into the record for you all. In addition to the project management team, which represents those organizations on the previous slide, we have the Project Advisory Committee that has met twice now, makes up a larger group of stakeholders. And then we have the Trail Identity Committee that's met a number of times as well as we think about what is the long-term name of the trail, the branding associated with it as well. So, jumping into discovery and engagement, we started off by reviewing a lot of the previous plans and documents that have been produced. plans and documents that have been produced that have implications on this particular trail corridor. You see some of those listed here. The asset and inventory analysis, we broke that into two different parts. First, we looked at the natural environment and assets. We could spend a lot of time going into that. It's tremendous. There's 21 public parks, six nature preserves, eight lakes and rivers, 12 bike and pedestrian, rail and connector trails off of this rail corridor. So, tremendous amount of natural resources there. On the built environment side, 26 different unique neighborhoods, 12 public schools, four business districts, two recreation centers, 11 historic sites, four art centers, and three what we're calling trail towns, or these unique opportunities to build small business and economic development around the trail. And those three are Bragtown, Bahama, and Rosemont. They have a really unique position and location on this trail as well. So, we're going to get into that a little bit more. But tremendous natural built environment along this particular corridor, the opportunity for the county to connect some of these assets, providing for transportation, recreation, small business development, is very unique in the work that we do. So, kudos to you all. Regarding specifically engagement, which took place from January 15th to March 25th, we have a project website that is up and running, durhamtoroxboroughplan.com, so you can go there. We are constantly updating that site with information. It's meant to be a portal. We launched a survey on that particular site. We're going to get into some of the results of that survey. We were able to produce a number of social media posts, getting information out about the project. And then, items five, six, and seven here, these are large public workshops. We had a number of key focus group meetings. And then, staff has been working really hard on a series of pop-up events throughout the community to try to get as much public engagement on the project as possible. The survey had nearly 3,000 total responses. 62 of those were by paper. Our team went in and put those, and digitized that information as well. We also have collected approximately 1,400 emails of people that want to stay informed about the project as well. 66% of the ZIP codes from the survey represent Durham County. Some of those obviously are outside of Durham County, but have interests, possibly land ownership or other interests inside the county. The survey, we broke it down into, you know, trying to get information on general usage, improvements, priorities, try to determine what level of community support was there. We had an interactive map as well, where people could go in geographically, identify things that they may or may not want to see as well. And all of this was provided in Spanish as well. You all can check this slide out in more detail, but we were able to break things down by the survey, by race, gender, income, age. Some of these things, we have stronger representation than others. But again, there's also the backstop of the focus groups and the workshops, as we try to hit very specific communities along this particular trail. But from a race perspective, 75% white, 4% black or African-American, 14% preferred not to answer. Gender was kind of a typical mix. We'll see mostly females take surveys when we put them out in this particular instance. Age was pretty diverse as well. And you all stop me at any moment if you've got any questions or thoughts.
I have a question on this slide.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any ideas of why the participation in race is the way it is? Is it, do you think it's because it's more rural in the northern part of the district where, you know, the majority of this is? Any ideas of why that would be 75% one race?
Yeah. Feel free to jump in as well. I would just say that we're going to break down some of the numbers in the northern areas, and it's not a huge group in the north. The folks in the north that took this survey have strong feelings about the trail, okay? But it doesn't make up a huge group of the survey itself. I'd probably say it just relates back to general cultural interest in trails. It's probably, when you just look at demographic users of trails along these lines, I think that's one of the main factors.
So, I would add that we've done a lot of surveys in Durham County. And when you do a website survey, it is very common that you get a lot of high-income folks, white people, you know, people who are more highly educated. It's very common that that's what happens when you put an online survey out. That being said, like Eric said, we did a lot of the pop-up events, public outreach, focus groups, in order to try to, you know, counter that. But it's hard to get people to not take your online survey sometimes, right? We got a tremendous response. And so, it wasn't demographically representative, but we, like I said, we tried to do other things to share the information more widely. We did, we do also look at the responses broken down to see if there are distinct differences. And to, you know, if there are distinct differences among any of these demographics, we would, we present that and share it, so.
Thank you.
We asked survey users, you know, what types of activities would they like to do on the trail? Of course, majority of those is walking and running, followed closely by the cycling as well. The e-biking movement, of course, continues to grow as well. The trail surface type, you know, would you like it to be a natural surface or hard surface? We were actually surprised with this project compared to other rail trail projects that we've done, that there was how great the no preference was, first of all. Otherwise, it was kind of split between those two as well. There are some funding-related implications with this trail surface type. There's a number of DOT grants that require a hard surface trail, but not all of them. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. You also see the horseback riding. There's 181 respondents there on that particular space, again, particularly in the northern portions of Durham County. Future trail use frequency, trying to get an idea of like, how many times would you be willing to actually use the trail? I mean, 18% of those didn't think they would ever use it. 44%, a few times a month or less. 32, a few times a week. Reasons for future trail use, exercise predominantly, mental health, visiting parks. That's not one that you see, but just the connectivity opportunities along this corridor are tremendous, and the survey participants definitely understand and picked up on that. What would respondents like to see? Restrooms, trailheads, the top ones there. In terms of top trail connections, they, you know, participants want to connect to other greenways and trails and other parks. So, what does this trail system look like to further galvanize and connect the open space system in the community? Overall level of support, so we had 2,700 respondents answered this question. 71% responded in the strongly support category. 15% were in the strongly opposed. So, then we broke down some of these numbers, particularly with North County residents. And a number of, you know, three primary ZIP codes there. The 712 ZIP code, you know, we had almost 300 respondents, 38 of those strongly opposed, 213 strongly supported, 503 Bahama, 194, 108 strongly opposed, 64 strongly support. And then, Rosemont with the 527, 133 respondents, 51 strongly opposed and 60 strongly support. So, we just want to provide a little bit of detail, not only in the survey results you come, this come out, but also in our workshops and focus groups as well. So, we want to be very transparent about what we found in this particular space. And this is speaking to earlier. I mean, there's, I mean, almost 3,000 respondents, so, very important to understand that. The survey interactive map, we had 578 map respondents who identified things from a geographic location. So, these are, you know, what types of things as planners should we be thinking about from a geographic standpoint? We broke those into two categories, opportunities and concerns. Opportunities broke those down into three major kind of categories, key connections, outdoor recreation development, and then education. Not just on the natural aspects of it, but also the history and historical implications along this corridor are significant, particularly around Staggville, et cetera. Concerns, those predominantly fit into three main categories. Safety, whether that be road crossings, the perception of safety issues or crime along the trail was an issue, long-term sustainability, and then, you know, will there be sufficient amenities along the trail as well? We had 672 direct participants engaged in, throughout this, the last couple of months of engagement. We had three public workshops, North Regional Library, Edison Johnson Recreation Center, and the Durham County Library. We then conducted three very targeted focus groups. One, North Durham Community, I think a number of you all were there, Bahama and Rosemont. Number two, the Staggville Descendants Council and Bragtown Community Association. So, these were very targeted focus groups for input. And then, we've reached 455 direct participants in the pop-up events. And you can see those 13 there and continuing to grow as well. For the public workshops, there were six primary, or really five primary categories. We had a mapping exercise where folks get onto a map, identify key opportunities, constraints. We discussed the trail identity, what should this thing look like, the trail surface, different amenities, and the crossings as well. We also provided for a little photo booth, just for some fun, keep the kids busy as well, and ask people, you know, what is it that you would like to do on the trail? So, what are some of the things that we heard, both positive and negative? You know, connectivity was huge. There were tons of concern just about safety, and what would that look like as well? There's some groups, and we heard this theme as well throughout various types of engagement, is the planning that takes place? Are we going to get this thing built? And almost like an impatience, I would say, associated with the project. Other comments, safe place to ride bikes, particularly for kids. North Durham, opportunity to provide some connectivity and provide more green space there. Some people thought it was a flat-out waste of money. Funds could be better spent on other opportunities. Folks felt like you need to keep the momentum going out of a planning effort like this. And then, the opportunity to connect the region as well. So, when we bring all of this together, the analysis, the survey, the workshops, the focus groups, we started to break this out into a SWOT analysis. And this is not typical for how we would do this, but, you know, our team and the project teams have been trying to get our minds around both the positives and negatives associated here. I've gone over a number of the strengths and weaknesses. I mean, we do have an existing rail corridor that's owned in fee, that's being pursued by the Conservation Fund for acquisition. Obviously, that's not closed at this particular point. There needs to be some type of phased implementation strategy here. Some of the threats, you've heard, you know, one that I haven't mentioned yet is the conflict with hunting, especially in the northern parts of the county. Again, this perceived crime, reduction in privacy, particularly in your rural areas, the potential for gentrification as well. Opportunities, you know, the highlight of the historical cultural features, outdoor recreation, and then the educational interpretive signage, like how do you tell the story of North Durham and the community and utilize this trail to help tell that story is certainly an opportunity? So, I'd like to stop there real quickly before we jump into the next, the last part of the presentation. We're going to kind of just break down the corridor real quickly and wrap things up. But that's the summary of the public engagement.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I imagine as we move forward, we will always come back to that conversation about engagement. I often am on the other end of those comments. Where, did you, I saw the list of the various stakeholders and groups that we visited. What was interested, were the packs, the cities' packs, were they potentially places that we shared the survey with or had conversations with? And Ellen, and my apologies for asking that before now.
They were not on our list. I'm not sure if we've sent an email out to them. Do you know if they were on our email list?
I don't believe they were on our email list for this round, but they can certainly be added for the next round.
Yeah, as we, I know collectively, we all can think about other ways as far as touch points, because we sometimes struggle as well getting feedback from a diversity of population that aligns with our profile. So, just wanted to check on that one.
Yeah, I would emphasize on this list, particularly the pop-up events, we were intentional about going to, you know, the bus station, the Sembrando racist group, the LEAP preschool, you know, trying to reach specific communities, Bragtown, so.
Y'all did a great job. Wondering if that's another place we can tap into as we move along.
Thank you. We really appreciate that feedback. And definitely for our next round of engagement, you know, seeing these, you know, demographic results and where our team needs to work to improve in the future is something that we're looking into. Also, it will be late, late summer, so there will be likely more events happening around Durham, more activities, things like that. So, we are focused on expanding who we've reached throughout this process and trying to really hone in and focus on groups that aren't typically included in the planning process. And, yeah, just meeting people where they are in the community. So, thank you.
So, to jump into some-
Just before you proceed. So, just to name a few organizations that I think that you should reach out to, Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People, People's Alliance, and the Friends of Durham, among others. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. I was going to hold my questions to the end. Should I do that, Chair?
If it's about community engagement, it's probably a good time to do that now.
Okay. Well, my question was more related to the railroad, waterways, and that sort of thing. So, I can wait till the end.
Let's wait till the rest of the plan, yeah.
So, we'll jump into some of the preliminary findings. Our analysis continues to be ongoing regarding the actual trail type itself. But up for consideration, we're thinking that to tie into the city of Durham's rail trail, to kind of extend their trail type, that's the first one you see here on the left, this parallel path, which has a separated bikeway with a buffer and then pedestrians. So, there's no conflict of those particular users. We're thinking it would certainly be appropriate to recommend this trail type to the Bragtown area, Dearborn driver, possibly even beyond to some extent. And then, move into a bit more of a rural trail type where we could have a shoulder, but then provide for, you know, a dual-use type of trail where, you know, your bikers and your walkers would be sharing the same 12 to 14-foot wide path. And that could take place approximately from Bragtown to Bahama. And then, move into the county line, if we wanted to explore the Equestrian Trail as a side path, then that could possibly be introduced from Bahama moving north. So, this is some of the things that we're kind of working through right now. It's not set in stone. We're looking forward to taking- We're looking forward to taking this back to the public, because you saw there's not a definitive direction that the public is saying, "We want this necessarily." So this is where we're landing at the moment and certainly open to considerations otherwise. Don't want to spend a ton of time going into all of the road crossings, but want to highlight that there are 21 of those road crossings. Some of those, safe. This thing goes directly under I-85, for example. So it's an underpass, but there are some other crossings here that we will have to give considerable attention to. You know, everything from simple pavement markings all the way to user-activated stoplight will be appropriate along this entire corridor. Some of the different elements that we've kind of picked up on looking at the entire corridor, opportunity for three different trail towns, that we've identified 14 potential trail connectors, four of those parks, three schools, and a whole other series of connectors. As I mentioned, there's 21 road crossings. You've got six stream or river crossings. Three of those are very unique trussel bridges that provide some great character opportunity. At this point, we've identified one major trailhead, two minor trailhead. We've identified the opportunity for two pocket parks. We've defined those as they would only be accessed by the trail themselves. So you wouldn't park and go to those trails, but these pocket parks would be accessible only if you're riding or walking from the trail. There's some opportunities for some local parks as well. We've just not identified them quite yet, but they would provide for parking restrooms as well. So these are the types of things we're looking for. Some of them we found, some of them we've got to continue to identify. We broke the entire trail corridor up into five different planning sections, starting with downtown Durham, the south, moving our way to Bragtown number two, what we call Two Rivers number three, Bahama number four, and number five, Rougemont. So one thing that I want to point out is these kind of trail town, this trail town idea of Bragtown, Bahama, and Rougemont. Again, we see some unique opportunity there for small business development, entrepreneurship, historic storytelling, et cetera, around those particular nodes, if you will. So I just want to break down each of these planning sections real quickly. For downtown Durham, we'll spend a ton of time there. This is predominantly within the city limits, but a number of connectivity opportunities, including some property that's owned by, that's going to be part of this particular package from the rail corridor as well. But this length is about 1.7 miles. You do have the underpass at I-85, you have the underpass at Camden Avenue, and then one at-grade crossing at East Club. So a number of trail connectors here. Of course, the East Coast Greenway is part of this. You've got the southern terminus of our study area is with the Durham, downtown Durham rail trail, and an opportunity to connect to the LRB Creek Trail as well. Norfolk Western Parcel, this is a 13-acre tract that is part of the rail corridor. Certainly some opportunities there to provide some recreation amenities. As mentioned, the I-85 and Camden Road underpasses, opportunities there to bring in some nice trail character. DOT and the City of Durham own some adjacent properties to the trail corridor that we're going to be exploring from a design standpoint as well. Section two, Bragtown, this section is approximately 2.5 miles, goes from East Club Boulevard to Sedney Ridge Elementary School. A number of project opportunities, including East Club Boulevard, where the city owns some property. Section, or Project 2.2, this is the Bragtown, what we're calling the Bragtown Market. This would be a public-private opportunity. I'm going to get into detail with that here shortly. There's some other project opportunities we're continuing to explore. The ability to connect to the school, the park, the library, and bus stops right in Bragtown is prime for this particular corridor as well. Hebron Road Connector along Cub Creek Trail as well. So a number of road crossings here, so safety is going to be paramount, and those have to be paid attention to. The city does control about one and a half acres on East Club. That would be optimal for some trail development, so we're talking to them about whether or not to incorporate this into the plan in detail. We have spent quite a bit of time with Vanessa and Germany along Dearborn, looking at the LBS Stop and Shop there, the future of what that particular project could look like in the context of rail trail development. And we were kind of dreaming up a number of ideas, but certainly want to, in addition to enhancing the entrepreneurship opportunities here on this property, the bus stop, the school, park, library are all within this particular area. So we've been able to spend some time with them, trying to figure out, you know, what do they see for the future of their property? And how can we better, best integrate this into a great public project that could drive traffic and help support small business growth in that particular area? So it's pretty exciting. Section three, Two Rivers, named after the Eno and the Little River. Lot of natural opportunities here as we move north, getting close to the Staggville Historic Site as well. Project opportunities, Penny's Bend, we see an opportunity to enhance the trailhead there, integrate history and culture in the trail, including the Staggville Historic Site and the historic Great Trading Path. A number of connectors proposed, the Mountains of Sea Trail, the Staggville Connector, which would be part of the East Coast Greenway along Old Oxford Road. And then you've got the Little River, Little River Elementary School, Lucas Middle School. These are all opportunities for connectivity. Stream crossings, you've got two trestle bridges. So these are your other last two trestles, Eno River and Little River as well. I should say the first one was on LRB Creek as well. So those are your three trestles, LRB, Eno, and Little River. The Penny's Bend, the MST, the Mountains of Sea Trail, is not particularly safe to cross over the bridge along Old Oxford Road. We're proposing that that would be rerouted. It would move perpendicular to the rail trail, and then you could move south across the trestle bridge and hop onto the Mountains of Sea Trail. Again, this is one of three of these trestle bridges. This one, we've analyzed from a structural standpoint, is in phenomenal shape. So that's, hopefully won't be too costly. The opportunity to integrate history and culture, as mentioned, we're continuing to get feedback from our stakeholder groups as well, looking forward to the next round of engagement so we can refine this. But the significance of the land, the history, and bringing these interpretive elements right into this, the trail to educate people, to preserve the history, and again, to help tell the story, we see a tremendous opportunity there. Bahama, this section extent will move from the East Coast Greenway up to Ball Road. It's about four and a half miles long. Proposed trail connectors, it's an opportunity to connect into Horton Grove Nature Preserve, the Lake Mickey Trail Connector as well. There's a number of stream crossings, a number of road crossings as well, but this is a rather large planning section. So the East Coast Greenway, move up towards Old Oxford Road, so you're not quite, you're seeing that here in the bottom of the screen, but it's already moved off of the rail corridor. But you see the connector 4.1 there would connect into Horton Grove, and this would be for running or walking, no bikes would be allowed there. The Lake Mickey opportunity to further develop that greenway system is certainly on the table as well. Continuing to explore a potential core connector across Mangum Elementary School, and I don't know, Ellen, if you wanted to speak any to this particular opportunity along Ball Road, and trying to make a connection here, but some conversations still need to be had there. But, you know.
Yeah, this is an opportunity to provide a connection to an elementary school, as well as to the Spruce Pine Lodge, you know, owned by the city and some of the city's recreational areas on Lake Mickey.
And then the final section, Rougemont, five and a half miles. North Carolina State's Hill Forest is here, the County Convenience Center property is here, and of course, the Rougemont Depot as well. See some different opportunities. The County Convenience Site, I know there's some limitations there with impervious surface, but we certainly want to continue to explore that, because it has quite a bit of road frontage, or I should say, property frontage on the rail trail itself. So opportunity in Rougemont itself to do some small business development as well. There's some other opportunities for trailhead development on Harris Mill Road. Just jumping into the one opportunity in Rougemont, we've been in touch with a number of property and business owners there. Joseph and Devon Ravella, they own the Red Leaf. These guys are father-son team, they're a bit of serial entrepreneurs and are making a go at it there. They have dreams of a stage area, yard games as well. Then we also have had conversations with Lid Eltany. The Eltany's actually control this entire property, 3.7 acres as well. Again, a lot of implications if we can drive users along this rail trail and create some public-private opportunities as well. So we're going to continue to explore this. They're very excited about this opportunity as well, so. So our next steps is we're going to continue in plan development through April and June, dive a little bit deeper into some of the things that you've seen here. And then we see a round two of public engagement happening July through September with the goal of compiling the final report August through October as well. We have a number of additional meetings. Durham Open Space on April 16th will present a very similar presentation to them. And then we, of course, got to keep the project advisory committee up to date here in June and July. So with that, be glad to answer any additional questions.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, so thank you for this presentation. One, among several onshore regarding the feasibility study. And so correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the funding for the feasibility study comes from the federal government, is that correct?
Yes, this study was funded with 80% federal funding through the NPO, the Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization, and a 20% non-federal match that was shared equally by the city, the county, and the East Coast Greenway Alliance.
As we move forward, do you have any concerns with regards to federal funding?
Yes. I mean, yeah, this is the question at every transportation meeting for the last two months. We, yeah, we all have concerns about the certainty of federal dollars. That being said, we have, for the, you know, the next immediate phase would be acquisition of the corridor. And we have been working with our partners at the NPO, at NCDOT, and the CAR-TAR RPO, which is kind of the NPO in Person County, as well as the City of Durham and Person County to line up funding for the acquisition. And we have, you know, the approval or imminent approval of federal dollars to support that. These federal dollars are not competitive discretionary grants, which are the ones that have seen the most issues and kind of clawbacks. These are kind of the formula funds that NCDOT and the NPO receive. So we have no indication at this point that those are at risk, you know, but it's, we're in unpredictable times, so.
So you were just describing the Conservation Fund. Yes, no?
So, yeah, so the corridor acquisition, right? So I want to emphasize that the rail corridor is owned by Norfolk Southern Railroad. Fee simple, so they own it. A lot of times railroads are in easements, and all indications are that this one is not in an easement, it is Norfolk Southern's property. The Conservation Fund is in negotiations with them to acquire the corridor. They're a nonprofit that has facilitated land deals like this, including here in Durham, the downtown rail trail. They bought the downtown rail trail from Norfolk Southern. The intention is that they would then turn it over to NCDOT, NCDOT, who would own the corridor long-term. So NCDOT would be using this combination of federal and local, and potentially grant money too, we've applied for some grants, to acquire the corridor. And, oh, what was I going to say? Well, I think that was a lot. I'll see if I can think.
And so there was a lot of concern about property rights coming out of any sort of acquisition that would occur here. And so I would just ask that we, you know, keep our residents, my neighbors in the north, in your thoughts, in your minds, in your plans as we move forward. Also, the protection of waterways, rivers in the northern part of the county, they're important for Durham. And so to the extent that you're planning, take that into consideration, and any mitigation measures that need to happen. By mitigation measures, I mean actual ones. And so this body historically has protected that water in the northern part of the county, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will continue to do that. Lastly, I was a little surprised about the outcome of these surveys, based on the engagement that we enjoyed together. It appeared to me that most of the people in attendance, at least that day, were adamant that this was not a good idea. And so what do you think accounts for that disparity?
So I believe a lot of the attendance at that one meeting were property owners, you know, adjacent to the trail. And there were, as you can remember, a lot of concerns about what would happen with the trail since it was abutting their property. We have had some legal letters that were being dispersed to residents not from the county, saying that the properties were subject to a rail banking, what's the word I'm looking for? Scenario, a rail banking scenario, but as Ellen just was going over, the rail is owned fee simple, so those properties are not subject to eminent domain or any takings. So I think that did cause a stir prior to the meeting, you know, receiving those legal letters that were inaccurate.
Yeah, I think we could have done a better job with communicating with our residents here with respect to what was coming next. I think that's the extent of my questions. Thank you for the work that you're doing, the work that you're going to do, and I look forward to the next presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for doing this really important work, and I know I got to get to a meeting around the Durham Roxboro Trail. One of the things I just wanted to say, I'm really grateful that most of the, we got mostly positive feedback about the trail, right? And that this is something that most people in Durham want. And just like what my colleague, Commissioner Valentine, said, you know, communication. I think that's with everything, when you're trying to communicate with thousands of people, you know, there's going to be gaps missed. So we just have to continuously improve communication on all parts. But I just wanted to ask the question around engage, the second piece of engagement, like what is that going to look like? Are we going to have a next set of surveys? You know, are we going to meet with other people in different parts of Durham? Like, I just wanted to get a sense of what that's going to be like.
So, yeah, the second phase of engagement that will occur between July and September we're shooting for, it will look very similar. We'll have, you know, public workshops, I believe four public workshops. We're planning to have actually more focus groups, so six focus groups. We'll be going back to the Bragtown Community Association, the Staggville Descendants Council, and the Northern Durham Focus Group that we had, in addition to some other focus groups. and the Northern Durham Focus Group that we had, in addition to some other focus groups. We're also going to be hosting those pop-up events to better meet people where they are in the community. And we're exploring some upcoming events during that time period as well. So it will look similar. Obviously, the, the content will change. We'll get more into the details of the trail concept plan and essentially going back to the community, you know, asking, this is, you know, what we heard, did we hear you correctly?
Yeah, that'll be great. Thank you so much.
All right, and I had a question here. So one of the things I, I heard when we were at the meeting there in Bahama. And I saw kind of pop up here is they said, you know, well, why don't you use the money for something else? Education or crime or whatever. My question here is do you, money that we get from federal or wherever it gets grants, they're designated just for this sort of project, right? You can't take that money, you can't get that money and then say, oh no, we're going to use it for something else. Correct?
The, yeah, for acquisition, like I described earlier, we're trying to line up federal funding, which is typically 80% with a 20% non-federal match. So yes, the vast majority of this funding is federal, would be federal transportation funding that has to be used to, to develop, build a project. So it, it can't be used for crime, you know, explicitly, education. It, it can't be used for even like road resurfacing or maintenance. It's only able to be used for like constructing new things.
And so, so that means that if we don't get, if we don't get the monies, other communities somewhere else, I mean, it's federal budget, right? It's federal stuff. So like if we don't get that, that money is designated for it. So somebody else is probably applying for it and they would get it as well. So our community would not be getting the benefit of those federal dollars that we all pay federal income tax. We all pay tax. It's not necessarily a question, I'm making a statement at this point. We all pay tax, federal tax. And that was one of the things we heard in the, in the Bahama meeting. It's like, you know, we don't want to use our federal tax money for this. But if we don't use it, somebody else is using our federal tax money for that. So why not use our benefit, get the benefit of the money that we spend, get our share for what we can to do something here in Durham. And this is earmarked for developing this sort of project. So I just want to make sure it's clear. When I talk to people about this, I say the same thing. You pay taxes. That's not going to stop. And no matter what's happening up there, you're still going to be paying taxes. And if we can get something to make better our community, I think we should do it. If we don't do it, you better believe some other state, some other county, some other community, somewhere else is taking that money that we spent, that we gave to the, to the federal government. They're using that money and they're going to do things, projects such as this because there's these projects all over the nation that need this sort of thing. So I want to appreciate you all. It is tough to go into those meetings. Sometimes it's not respectful. There's a lot of disrespect in that. There's a lot of heat. There's a lot of anger. But I appreciate how you all are composed and you, you give facts. You say, you know, you, you give explanations regardless of how they are treating you. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the work that you're doing. I appreciate the survey results. It is very easy to believe, everybody believes one thing when you're contained in one room. It's easy to say, everybody doesn't want this. But when you're in a room of 100 people and you have a county of almost 300,000, it, it's a difference, right? And these surveys, it's borne out in these surveys. So again, I appreciate y'all, I appreciate this report. I look forward to this being completed. I look forward to this being a signature of Durham, just like the tobacco trail is. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I was just going to say thank you. This is lots of work and much needed. Seeing the number, I guess the year 2006, as far as it being on our planning forefront, speaks a lot about the years of commitment to this rail trail project. So we're getting closer.
Yeah, and I want to take the opportunity first shout out to the open space and real estate staff because they're the ones who put this in there years ago and consistently put it in plans and identified it as a future project, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, and I think we have our last item for today, for discussion today.
Okay, board members, we are about to hear a presentation facilitated by Ms. Trapp, our chief of staff on the Durham County naming and renaming policy. And this presentation will show that that policy was adopted in 2016. Our intent is to have an initial conversation today with a follow-up discussion at a future work session.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, manager, county attorney, I believe we are getting the presentation up and running. That is it? Thank you. As manager shared, this is just a very brief overview of a policy that was adopted by the commissioners in 2016 that addresses how we name and rename spaces in the county. And so I'll go over these highlights of the policy. In your packet of materials, you do have the policy as well as the application for the policy. And so again, adopted in 2016, I think one of the most critical pieces of that policy is that no entire building can be named for an individual. We only name features. And so we recently named a lobby in Admin 2 and we recently named a conference room in our cooperative extension facility, but we do not name whole buildings per this policy. The authority to name or rename or revoke is held with you all. Requests are made via application and those requests can be internal or external partners that can make that request. Applications, once the application comes in, typically it is sent to the clerk's office and then the clerk's office will forward it to the commissioners. And then we activate the naming committee, which will then take some steps to review the application, to vet the nominee and then go through our process for making a recommendation to the board. Once you all hear that recommendation, you can activate us to continue with that recommendation or you may have a different recommendation. And so of course that is, we will follow as you all dictate once we have presented. Once we have completed that recommendation and then there is a public hearing that we also provide to the public before you finally adopt on that naming. Here are the members of the naming committee. We try to cover all aspects and we do engage in conversations with our general service staff, with the engineering staff, with others as we need to, once we get to those conversations. And here are some examples of two namings that we've recently done under this policy. The Lowell Silo Lobby, which is in Admin 2, and when you first walk in there. And then the Carle de Hodges Conference Room, which is in the county agricultural building. It is one of, the two conference rooms have been combined to the Hodges Conference Room. And that is it for our naming policy. Welcome any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Trapp, for that presentation. I just, I want to just put this out there because this is why we're having this discussion. People in the community are coming to the commissioners about naming a building after County Commissioner Bill Bell and former mayor Bill Bell. This is just a discussion right now and, you know, about the process, things like that. So we wanted to have this discussion. So I just wanted to make, this is why we're doing this. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to associate myself, the comments made by my esteemed colleague, Michelle Burton. And also, it's my, it's my understanding, and counselor, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if the board makes a decision to decide, or yeah, if the board makes a decision to name a building after someone, we have within our authority to create an exception. So I, I don't think that a, a change to the policy is necessary in this particular situation, but we could create an exception to the policy, a waiver to the policy to get, to get this done if the board decides it wants to move in that direction. I most certainly support honoring William Bill Bell for his many, many, many years of service to our community, both as a county commissioner and as our, our mayor. And so he had a vision for the 21st century, long before we arrived into the 21st century. And many of the transformations that's happened downtown can be attributed to him as well as many others who worked tirelessly to make Durham what it is today. And so again, let me just reiterate, I think that not necessarily a change in policy is what required here, but action by the board if we see fit. So thank you.
So I would just say that you do have the authority to create an exception. However, and we can talk more about this later, but I would also say that you should keep in mind the precedent that you, that you set by doing that and the criteria by which you will use to actually, to set those exceptions. So those are two things that I would say that you would have to keep in mind when you do that. Once you open that door, it becomes a little harder to shut.
Thank you, Ms. Trapp, Mrs. Trapp for, for this presentation. There was a, on one of your slides, you mentioned like the process and you said it originates with an application. If we follow the policy in which this works, yeah, requests may be made via application. Does that mean, kind of, kind of teetering on what Commissioner Valentine mentioned, does, does the public have to, someone in the public has to make a request, right? The, the request doesn't follow the policy as it, as it stated. The request doesn't originate from us, right? It, it originates from someone else and it flows up to us, correct?
Correct.
All right. In that process flow, are there? So there's required, you said, you stated early on that, you know, the policy, the policy says we, we don't name buildings after individuals, it's just parts of buildings. If someone makes a request to name a building after an individual, will they get denied? And it is, when it makes it up to us, is it an appeal or is it just a regular process?
So typically, what we've experienced in the last two is that someone will verbally say, this is what I would like to do, in reaching out to the clerk's office. And the clerk will forward what the policy is and then what the application is. And we'll say, so if they've communicated verbally, I'm looking at a building, then the clerk would suggest, well, per our policy, we don't name buildings. And so typically the application would be modified to accommodate what our policy is. So we haven't had an instance where someone has submitted the actual policy for the building that we didn't have a conversation with and they didn't say, well, let me revise this before it goes any further.
I was curious about that, if, if something is denied, do they have the, denied from the staff? But it has to come up through us for any kind of, it just gets modified, it's not necessarily decided?
Right. And so you all would not receive, if, if they did submit the policy that requested something that was against the policy, you wouldn't see that. We would work with the submitter to, with what they could submit based on what our policy is. And then we would submit to you what it was in the modified version.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments about this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So in response to the county attorney's concerns around precedent, in asking for amongst my colleagues an exception to the policy, I believe this is extraordinary circumstances. And so we're talking about someone who's given more than half of their life to the service of our community. And so to the extent that this, that is a precedent that's being established, I would say that this is an extraordinary circumstance in which I hope that we can reach some consensus on in, in moving this forward. And so to the extent that the policy is laid out as it is, it's going to be my request that we work outside of the purview of the existing policy and try to establish an exception in this circumstance. Thank you.
That's heard. And this is just an outline of how the policy works. The discussion about if any kind of this or that or what recommendations or whatever from the board, that's for a later date when we have all five of us present to discuss. So thank you, Mrs. Trapp. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your work and I appreciate you presenting this, Michelle.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm just glad we're just having this discussion right now so we can, you know, get the ball rolling, figure out, you know, what we're in, what the parameters are and what we need to do. So thank you for presenting this to us. So yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Trapp.
And that concludes our discussion topics and that brings, that's the last part of our agenda. The last, the last thing on our agenda is adjournment. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and probably second that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Past unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you.